Test, test.
Test, test.
Well, Bianca had to leave um to the sick kid tonight. She literally just left twenty minutes ago.
Test, test.
Imagine a ship navigating vast waters, its bow cutting through waves, charting a course toward a shared horizon.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, I, yeah, I had to test too.
Test, test.
Hello there.
Hey, Mr. Page.
How you doing?
Good, how are you? You ready for Christmas?
Test, test.
We're actually going to pitch for Christmas.
I heard, I heard y'all are vacating the family and going to see the Steelers play.
Hey, how are you doing?
Hi lady. It was so good.
Hi. Well, could you deliver one?
Yes, yes, thank you.
One, two, test, one, two.
All right, we'll talk.
Yeah. Wendy, I'll leave.
So, I don't know that I've told you this, we're going to the Steelers' Tuesday game now.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, we're leaving Christmas.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We're leaving Christmas early morning and we'll be back the day after. We're leaving for Houston on Friday to go to the.
Living the life.
Yep, Jelly Bean's getting a bath in nails and so two of us, it was, we were bad, but said check her nails and I said, oh, he has a brush or two. And they said, well, you can do two, you get a free chair and you can do three, three shots on your own. And I said, I want pictures of that.
So Bob, I am solo mission again tonight. If you want to uh team with me if there's issues.
All right.
Yeah.
Um, so you'll be in charge of muting and muting the microphones.
Yes.
Um, and if you have any questions or need me to do anything, um, I got the teams open and everything, good to go.
Did you already tell her that just after the work session before the close session, you're coming?
Testing, testing. Testing, testing.
Good evening, I call this December tenth meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Councilmember Rao is not going to be present this evening. Thank you to those here in person with us tonight, those watching via livestream, and those who are watching the recording of this meeting. Our town mission statement, which helps guide our decisions tonight and into the future, is connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. Officer Jay Thompson is our sergeant-at-arms for this evening's meeting. We thank you for your attendance. This evening, Councilmember Skargis Johnson will be leading our invocation.
I totally forgot to prepare.
So. Happy holidays.
Yes, so um, thank you all for a wonderful 2024, what a difference a year makes. We're all in person together and I hope that everyone has a great holiday um and a nice break and a very prosperous 2025.
Thank you very much. All who are able, please stand as we recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, town council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Is there anyone who wants to share anything about tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I would, is there a motion and a second to adopt this evening's regular agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second from Mayor Protem Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously six zero. There are ten items on this evening's consent agenda, perhaps that's a new record. Capital project ordinance amendment recognizing NCDOT reimbursement funding, November twelfth and fourteenth minutes, resolution approving Morrisville's legislative agenda for the 2025 through 2026 biennium, resolution unsealing closed session minutes, resolution amending the appointed public body's administrative policy, budget ordinance amendment reconciling ARPA funds, resolution approving PZB 2025 chair, vice chair appointments, ordinance amending chapters eighteen and fifty-eight of the town code of ordinances, resolution approving solid waste services contract with GFL, and resolution adopting the revised town council 2025 meeting schedule. Would any member of the council wish to pull an item for discussion and separate vote at this time? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, I'd like to pull six aye with the resolution approving the solid waste services contract with GFL.
Okay, are there any other items that people would like to remove? Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda without item six aye, the solid waste. I have a motion from Councilmember Vadi, a second from Mayor Protem Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously six zero also. If we could have Mr. Jeffrey Brown, our Public Works Director, come to answer any questions and help our discussion.
So, um, I really don't have a question, um, I just have a couple of comments and a couple of clarifications, just for uh public's benefit. First of all, I um, I'm thrilled by this resolution and kudos to our Public Works Director, Jeffrey Brown, for um, the effort that went into the bid process for our solid waste um, contract. And so tonight, we're going to award the contract to GFL, who is our current solid waste provider, um, but they came in at a fabulous um quote, actually under um, the current quote that we have with GFL, so um, thank you um, to Jeffrey for all that hard work, so um, definitely want to approve the contract, but I also want to make sure that the public, because I've received a lot of questions on this one item, want to make sure the public um, is clear that this is just awarding the contract to GFL for our solid waste services. This has nothing to do with a potential solid waste fee, um, and the solid waste fee conversation is still to come, council, I believe, um, based on town managers, um, email, council will have discussion at our annual retreat, which is scheduled for the last weekend in January of 2025, and then potentially a uh vote um, on a solid waste fee in early February. So, just want to make that clear to the public, because the timeline was not um, was not clear in the briefing item and I want to make sure, I answered a lot of questions about that, so I want to make sure that others have heard the same information, so if town manager has anything to add to that, please.
Can I offer one clarification?
Yes, please.
So, the, the potential vote, you are correct, so the solid waste fee discussion became up, came up, because that had been postponed until you knew what the new contract would be, because there couldn't really be a fee until you knew what the cost would be. So, that was why that came up in the discussion of the GFL contract. So, from that, you gave staff some direction to follow up on if there were to be discussion of a fee, could we get that added to the Wake County tax bill, the property tax bill, and what would the timeline look like? So, um, our staff reached out and talked with Wake County, and they confirmed that if you were to want to reserve a line on the property tax bill to potentially to consider a solid waste fee as part of the FY26 budget, they would need to know about that line by early February. So, that will be the decision you'll be asked to make um, at the retreat or at the first meeting following the retreat, is whether or not you wish to ask the county to add that line to the property tax bill. You'll still then have the opportunity to discuss a solid waste fee in the context of your other budget discussions going into February and March. Uh, the county would ask for an estimate if there were to be a solid waste fee, probably in the March window, but we do the same thing with our other fees that are part of the property tax bill, our ERU related to stormwater, so that's not inconsistent with what you normally do. And then, again, should you choose to implement a solid waste fee, which again, I want to be clear, council has not made any sort of decision in that regard, should you make that decision, then they would have to know that final number as soon as the budget was passed, because then they're preparing invoices to go out in either June or July.
Okay, thank you, Raina, I appreciate that. I think it's important for the public to understand the timeline moving forward and except for this conversation right now, they would not be aware of that, so I appreciate all sharing that information as well.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you, Jeffrey.
Thank you.
Okay, so then I'll go ahead and make a motion if we're ready. I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024 dash three seven seven dash zero of the Morrisville Town Council awarding solid waste services contract.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second from Councilmember Skargis Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries six zero, thank you very much. Okay. All ten passed, great. We are now at item eight, administrative reports. These are provided for information only, does council have specific questions regarding the quarterly capital projects update? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Hey, Mark.
Good evening.
I have a question specifically about the Church Street Southern Lot.
Yes.
It talks about having a soft opening in December. Do you know when that is?
Good question. So, we are working towards getting the last couple of things they can care about the park. I certainly anticipated before the end of the month, but it could be any day now.
Okay.
Trying to get a water meter set and some other utility things wrapped up.
All right. And then, when is the official ribbon cutting scheduled?
I believe it's January 14th. Yes, January 14th.
Okay. And then, lastly, can you just list what amenities are available at this Southern Lot, because it is not just specific to cricket?
That's right. So, the Southern Lot will have basketball courts, sand volleyball courts, multi-sport courts, as well as the practice pitches for cricket, and a picnic shelter and a restroom building as well.
All right. Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for our town engineer?
And also the Gandhi statue, too.
Oh, yes, that's correct. We just relocated the Gandhi statue there as well. That's true. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Very comprehensive.
Have a good evening.
We are now at the presentation section of the agenda, and that's, I think, why we have a full room tonight. At this time, we invite Police Chief Pete Acosta, Fire Chief Nathan Luzinski, and Director of Information Technology Rick Ralph to come forward for the first presentation.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. I know we have a busy, a busy agenda tonight, so we will, we will work fast, but I do think it's important that each one of the officers and all of our staff have this opportunity to be recognized tonight. As you know, in September, Hurricane Helene hit western North Carolina, which resulted in over 100 fatalities and just absolute destruction. One of the things that occurred during this time was North Carolina declared a state of emergency, and that's where we came in. We had staff from IT, fire, police, all respond in different ways from being deployed to the areas of destruction, to work in the emergency management centers, both in, Wilkes-Barre and in Raleigh. So, as far as the officers are concerned, when they were deployed, they were expected to be 100% self-sufficient. There was no electricity, no water, no food, there was nothing. They were expected, when they left here, to be 100% self-sufficient. As things changed and evolved while they were there, they eventually got some electricity, but they were taking baths out of plastic bottles, and, you know, they just had to do everything on their own. Obviously, there was some additional support there, but these officers were also expected, you know, to, to sleep under uncomfortable conditions, and then work 12 to sometimes 16 hours a day. You know, we received photographs. I was hesitant to put those up tonight, because I just thought it was more appropriate to, to leave that with them. But, when we received the pictures, the devastation was one thing, but to see your, your own folks there kind of reached us a little bit differently here at home. I think it's, it, it's a lot, there's a lot to be said for folks who run too danger. And when things happen, they don't question going to dangerous situations for the betterment of someone else, not themselves. So, I'm gonna allow the other directors to come up, say a few words, and then we'll, we'll have it.
And for IT, one thing, so it was late in the evening on Saturday that I received a call from North Carolina IT Strike Team, asking for some assistance in the Western North Carolina Emergency Operations Center. And so, a quick story about the individual that helped on our staff. Within 12 hours, they volunteered, packed their bags, and headed to western North Carolina for 12-hour shifts in the emergency operations center to provide IT support for folks that are, are serving out in the field. So, we're very appreciative of this individual and glad to honor them tonight.
Good evening, council. Good evening, everyone. The thing that was unique with fire is, we typically send people on water rescue deployments, structural collapse, stuff like that. This was a little bit different with fire. We send staff there to sort of just support whatever the need was. What I found fascinating by the pictures we got was the amount of empathy our staff showed. They typically, as I said, we find them in boats with use of our equipment. They had their normal gear on, and they were delivering supplies to just residents that were stuck. One of the best pictures I saw was our staff just sitting with somebody on their front porch, providing a lending ear for hours. Just, they didn't have anybody there on the side of the mountain. They needed some supplies. They didn't drop the supplies and they run. They literally sat there and provided what was probably the most valuable commodity at that point, which is time. Time and just an active ear. What can we do to help you? And a lot of times, that was just a conversation. So, we got deployed in a very unique sort of non-traditional role. Our staff stepped up, showed a tremendous amount of empathy. And we preach in fire that, and I hope some of the younger individuals in the crowd can hear this, is the world needs more we unless I, and I think our staff really demonstrated that. So, I'm really proud of what they did. They went in a very unique role, in a non-traditional role. They like to be in the center of the hot and heavy, and they just found themselves in a very empathetic way, and they delivered as they always do. So, and I, I mean, I could speak for IT and, and police. They, our staff collectively throughout town did an amazing job, so we're very thankful for them.
Tonight, I'm going to be issuing a chief citation to all of the officers who are involved. So, when you hear your name, if you'll please come up, Lieutenant Tina Rosenkranz. Lieutenant Rosenkranz, she really spearheaded everything, boots on the ground, took care of everything. She was our go-to. Sergeant Lori Strickland, Corporal Hayden Orr, Corporal Patrick Lynch, Officer Quaid Wilt, Officer Cameron Cook, Officer Terry. And if I, if I could have Captain Brad Shirley come up as well. Captain Shirley volunteered at the state's emergency management center for a few days, where they were working 12-hour shifts.
For the fire staff that is here and got deployed, can you guys come up? And if I can, for a second, maybe have Captain Dinkins describe what you guys saw while you were there, just briefly. I know they got a busy night, and I don't want to take up too much of your time, but we had, I think in the neighborhood of 14 people deployed on two different, 14? 12. Chief Du and I were there at heart. So, this is Forrest Wills, Captain Dinkins, Kevin Squires. Just briefly tell council what you saw.
Good evening. We, like he said, we normally go on like water rescue deployments and stuff. This was a different experience for us. We had never seen this level of destruction where we went. It looked like tsunamis had gone through. And because we weren't doing our normal type missions, I think it was unique for us, because we found that we were most helpful doing anything and everything that people wanted, whether it was delivering supplies, or going to fire stations there that had been run nonstop by volunteers, and just cleaning the place, or running a few calls for them so they could eat. It was, it was different for us. We got a lot out of it. We learned about, you know, aspects of these communities that we could take back here if we ever experienced something, where to look for, you know, people that are underserved possibly or underrepresented, and I think that was a good experience for us. So.
So, I'll be presenting a chief's coin to all of the staff that got deployed, and it's just something that goes, it, it's given to individuals that demonstrate a high level of competency and commitment, and in this situation, it's on behalf of the residents of North Carolina and from us. So, obviously, we're very thankful for them. So, thank you.
And I'd like to call up Chuck Bryant from our IT staff. He's the one that served in Western North Carolina EOC for the IT support.
Wait a second. Before you leave, we have a couple of council members who want to thank you. I'd like to start with Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, I specifically wanted to thank you all, because I'm from western North Carolina, from McDowell County, and I still have family living over there, and lots of friends that I went to school with. So, it was heart-wrenching looking at that devastation from here, and being helpless to do anything. And I was so proud to see Morrisville go out there. It, you know, brought tears to my eyes, and I just really want to thank you guys for chipping in and going out there. Thank you.
I think we'll just come down the line. Councilmember Skargis-Johnson?
I would like to say a heartfelt thank you to each one of you. You really shined in the time of need for the state of North Carolina, and you showed what Morrisville has as far as pride and leadership. You are all leaders. Thank you so much for your service.
Councilmember Johnson?
So, those of us here in Morrisville are not surprised. Chief talked about the empathy and the compassion, and we see that every day, every day of the year. So, thank you for, for your service to the citizens of North Carolina that needed it. Thank you for representing, as you do every day, for representing Morrisville the way you do. And I wish you all a very happy holiday, and time to spend with family and friends. And thank you again for your service to us, the citizens of Morrisville, and to the citizens of North Carolina.
You model what's the best in people, so thank you for your service to everyone. Mayor Protem Garamella?
Yeah, I think I echo everything has been said, but these are the moments where, yes, humanity and going out over and beyond, but also, the more important thing is opportunities like these help us to better deliver things in the future. And because you don't get these kind of opportunities, but to seize it and go and help will go a long way. Thank you.
Councilmember Robati?
You know, I remember when, I, I was in Princeton, New Jersey, when the towers went down, and one of the things that we said all the time was about emergency personnel running into the towers when everybody else was running out. And I think that this situation is very similar, because I know people that were there, and they said how terrifying it was and how hopeless they felt, and how, just how frightened they were, and they felt like nothing would ever be the same again. And I'm so proud that you all went down there and did whatever was necessary, you know? I, I'm so proud that you went down there and cleaned a firehouse. It's not glamorous, but it's what there was to do, and you did it. And, you know, you went down there and you spelled police officers that had been working around the clock. It, it's just, it, it's so heartwarming to me that you can explore all the aspects of heroism like you did. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Garamella for another comment, and then the town manager, please.
Yeah, more important, you know, the opportunities, like, I'll tell you how important western North Carolina is, not just going and looking at the Blue Ridge Mountain and this one. Marion, North Carolina, Baxter is the company that basically has those IV bags. 80% of the entire US production comes out of Marion. There's a plant out there. When this thing hit, almost every hospital in the United States got impacted right away, because they were doing, they stopped doing elective surgeries. And, and at the time, I came to know, like, you know, from NCLM, we had their town manager on our boat. But previously, when the hurricane hit Puerto Rico, the other plant was there. So, even though the distance, you know, 80% of the entire hospitals' IV bags come from Marion. And that was only I came to know after the fact, but that's how important our North Carolina is. So, just wanted to say that.
Town Manager Zudma, please.
Thank you, mayor. Appreciate just a moment of privilege to say thank you to this group. You know, you do amazing things here every day, but to take that on the road is just, continues to demonstrate your commitment to this community, commitment to other communities. And it's interesting that you all would be standing in front of our values on that wall, because I would say then, and argue that what you all did in volunteering, and in going and enduring what you endured speaks directly to those values. So, thank you.
I think one more round of applause. Thank you all so much. We're going to move on to the next item now. We will invite Sustainability Coordinator Kimberly Conley to come forward to recognize the 19th Annual MESC Poster Contest Winners. 19 years, wow.
Good evening, council. This is one of my favorite nights of the year. I would like to invite up Chair of the Morrisville Environment and Stormwater Committee, Donna Catalini. And the MESC group is going to do the majority of this presentation tonight. So, mayor, if you would come to the front of the stage, and we're going to, in a minute or two, we're going to start naming the names of the, the winners.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody. First, I want to, I'm Donna Catalini. I'm the current Chair of the Stormwater, the Environmental and Stormwater Committee. I want to thank the committee members who are not only here tonight, but who helped with this program by volunteering hours in the office with Kimberly to help organize, to help scan, to help just put it together, a spreadsheet, because it's, it's an incredible amount of work that we all enjoy, and it's, we, we put a lot of time into it. So, I'd like to thank Sunil Mishra, who's in the back. I'd like to thank Sarayu Vardaragam? Vard, okay, sorry. to celebrate all the artists, and that will be from 2:00 to 3:30. So we invite everybody to come and talk to our little artists. And with that, I hand it over to Sarayu. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm happy to present this year's winners. For the fifth grade, we have Shritar Reddy Akhipati. For the fourth grade, it's Manaswini Pasumarti. Third grade, Jiwana Clare.
If I could interrupt just for one second, it's really special. Sanvi was our grand prize winner last year, so congratulations.
First grade, Manvita Sri Brugumalla.
So every year, we hang all of the grand prize winners, the banners on Town Hall Drive just after the holidays. And so Srinanshi's banner will be hung along with all of the others. So that's a really special time. And at this time, I would like to invite our head librarian from the Morrisville Community Library, Helen Yamamoto, up to tell you a little bit more about the open house that we're doing on January 11th. Yes, please.
I just want to invite you to the Morrisville Community Library anytime, but especially on January 11th. It's a Saturday from 2:00 to 3:30. We will have the grand prize through third place winning posters on display, and we'll have a PowerPoint of all the poster entries. Plus, we will have nine of the artists there with their works to share what they learned about water and to talk about their inspiration for their poster. If you, it's a drop-in program, so you can come anytime between 2:00 and 3:30. But we will also have the winning posters on display the entire month. So if you can't make it that day, please do drop by during the month of January and see the posters. Congratulations to all the winners here tonight.
Thank you, Helen. Appreciate that. So all of our student art poster families that are here, thank you for making the time to be with us. We really appreciate having you, and this recognition is really special to, to town council and to staff. You are welcome to go out into the lobby. We've got your gift bags ready for you, and we can take some more pictures out there too, if you'd like. So please go ahead and meet our staff out in the, out in the lobby. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Kimberly. You're doing such great work in your department.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to give them just a moment to go ahead and get their prizes. Take care. Okay. Next, we'd like to invite Town Manager Brendan Zudma to come forward for the next recognition.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for a few minutes tonight for a really special recognition. I've invited up my good friend and, and compatriot in some ways, Rose Cornelius, the President of the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce. We had mentioned this at an earlier meeting, but this is really the official final council meeting for Rose in her role as President of the Morrisville Chamber. So I want to share with you that, I want to share my appreciation with you, but more importantly, with the audience, and particularly with Rose's family, because Rose is a person that just gives and gives and gives. And I think that is just who she is as a person, that is who she is as a professional, that is who she is as a pastor and a doctor and, and in so many different roles. So we're officially recognizing her, completing her term and retiring as a President of the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce after two years plus in that role, and really stepping in to bring a lot of stability to the chamber and to work closely with the town. And as a result of a lot of her hard work and certainly her staff's hard work, we now have a new agreement in place between the town and the chamber that I think really speaks to the opportunities that we have to work together in going forward with whoever the new president may be. I don't think an announcement quite has been made yet. It's, we're this close. And, and I'm sure that that person will be wonderful, but they won't be Rose. And I think we all, we all recognize that. And for the audience, I think it's, it's not just about Rose the professional, it is about Rose the wife and the mother and the grandmother. It is about a person who I've come to know that just puts so many things and so many people ahead of her own interests and had, and in some cases, ahead of her own needs to support others and work with others. And she's done that not just as the President of the Chamber of Commerce, she has done that previously with Dorcas Ministries, she has done that through her pastoring of any number of churches and larger religious organizations, and having traveled the world to do that work and to share that good word and to, to celebrate and support others. She has served on any, I won't list them all because the list is too long, but served on any number of various charitable organization boards and volunteered with different organizations. And, you know, he, she's done that in North Carolina, she's done that in Virginia and other places. And so I say all that to say that, you know, Rose, you will, will certainly be missed. We hope that your successor is, you know, similar to you, won't be you, but is similar to you in terms of bringing good things to the work and good things to this town and to this community. And so with that, this hardly begins to demonstrate the appreciation that I would say I have for you and that our staff has for you, and I think I can speak for council as well. But I do have a certificate I would like to present to you, and then we do have, I think some rather attractive roses that we would like to also give to you, Rose. You got that right? Okay, just checking. So the certificate of appreciation, "The town of Morrisville thanks Rose Cornelius to honor the legacy you leave behind and extend our heartfelt gratitude for the countless ways you have inspired and uplifted those around you." So I want to present that to you and present these flowers. And then what I thought we'd do is ask the council to offer any remarks they may have. I assume they do. And then we would turn it over to you, and then we would gather for a photo. So please.
I, I thought we'd start down at the other end this time with Councilmember Robati and work our way.
So many remarks. You know, Rose, it's funny to talk about someone leaving a legacy that has been in a position for two and a half years, and yet I don't think there's one person that would deny that you are leaving a legacy on our chamber and on our town. And I, I think it's going to be, you know, I, I'm excited for whatever comes with the chamber, but I think it's going to be very different without you. And, you know, I, from one busy, busy woman to another, if you want to get anything ever done, find the busiest woman that you can and ask her to do it because we will get it done. And that's always been my experience of you, and I, you know, I just want to thank you really from the bottom of my heart, from everything that just I've personally learned from you, just from watching you and from, for everything that you've done for our town also.
You have Representative Milla.
No, I think, Rose, thank you. And one thing I'll certainly say is, if you look at your association with Dorcas Ministry, so the Dorcas Ministry has highlighted your association with Marshall Chamber, it's always the Marshall Chamber that's highlighted, but never did I see, like, you take credit for any of the things, but Rose is Rose, you know, like, never ever, you know, shown that, okay, I am this one, but always humble down to earth. I think that's something that we got to all learn from you, and thank you so much. And for your family, you know, bringing, I think that's a testimony of, you know, the entire family coming here. And thanks for sharing your mom or your, you know, grandmother or, you know, or husband, anything. Like, I mean, it is, it is so good, you know, to see that family bonding, and thank you.
The word legacy has been said a number of times. You've touched so many lives directly and all of our lives indirectly. And I've known you so, for so many years and so many roles that you've had, and we've worked together, and it's been a real pleasure. And I know that you're not going far, and I know that you have mentioned that you're going to be even more busy now. And so we look forward to continuing this collaboration that has made Morrisville a really great place, and a lot of that is because of you. So thank you so much. Councilmember Johnson.
So Rose, I'm going to echo some of the same messages you just heard. Thank you, thank you so much for all you have done for our community. I've known you for many, many years, back to the days of Dorcas Ministry, and you have touched this community in more ways than I think we all know. And so I thank you for that incredibly well-deserved, well-deserved retirement. I hope you do retire a little and enjoy and relax, but thank you for all you did to touch this community. We are better for your service. And I too want to thank your family very much for sharing, Rose, with all of us here in the greater community. We are, we are all very lucky to know Rose Cornelius and very lucky to have her here in our community. So thank you, Rose. Well deserved.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Thank you very much for all of your service to the Morrisville and wider Wade County community, because it really takes a strong heart, and your heart is of gold, and you really are authentic, and you care about people, and you're, and you're easily able to bring walls down when people talk to you, and you can connect, and that is something that many of us can never do. So that natural connection that you bring is going to be, I think, a gap for, you know, a person trying to fill your shoes, and that is part of your legacy. Now, I got to know you first when you were working at Dorcas Ministries, and every time I go to a chamber event, and you weren't the chamber president back then, you were just a member, you were overjoyed to see me. And I'm like, but you really connected and you remembered things about me, and I know I wasn't the only person that felt special that day or that afternoon. I knew that that's just who you are, and that's what you do, is you bring people together and you make them feel special, and you inspire them to take it to the next level. So thank you so much for your service, and I hope you stay in motion. I don't think retirement means you stop doing anything, but it means that you have the opportunity to do what you love, be with your family, enjoy that. What's the next adventure? You get to choose. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender.
So I don't know what I can say that hasn't already been said, but thank you. I think Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson really nailed it. You are a very authentic person, and I just think you're a beautiful person inside and out, and just a wonderful role model for the rest of us. So thank you.
Oh, wow. I, I wasn't prepared for all of that, but I thank you all so much. I just have a few comments to make to Mayor Colley, to Mayor Pro Tem Satish Garamella, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Ann Robati, Councilmember Donna Fender, Councilmember Vicky Scroggins-Johnson, and in Steve Rau's absence, Councilmember Steve Rau. To town staff, business leaders, and all others in attendance here and online. Morrisville is the best town, and the best county, and the best state, and the best country in the world. And I have been honored to serve as President of the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce, a chamber whose future is bright. And I am happy to report that I leave you with a stronger, more stable chamber. I'd like to thank the town council and the town manager for the part you played in bolstering your chamber. The Morrisville Chamber of Commerce has carved out a reputation as being small but mighty, with a tenacious, hardworking, but caring staff. We have been able to bring our business community relevant and powerful programs to empower and inform so that businesses of all sizes can grow and thrive in a competitive global economy. To the mayor and town council, I thank you. Thanks for your patience with the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce. You've helped us weather the storm of COVID, and now we're in a much better place. Thank you for every time you showed up at events and ribbon cuttings, at early morning gatherings and after-hour gatherings. gatherings and after-hour gatherings. Thanks for every time that you sacrificed time with your family to represent the town and be present with our business community. Your presence was not only important to our business community, but also to our community at large. People like to know who is representing them. They like being able to shake your hand and have a conversation with you. I applaud you for your accessibility and dedication. By showing up at events, you are also showing your support for the Chamber of Commerce. So really, I thank you for that. To town staff, I thank you. Town manager Brandon Zudema, it's been a pleasure to partner with you on several projects. I can name the state of Morrisville for one, First Responders Event for another, and many other events that we've partnered together on. Thank you for the input of everybody, every staff member. And, you know, you have a stellar staff, and there are too many for me to name, and I don't want to leave somebody out, so I won't name any particular name, but your staff is the greatest. You're very fortunate to have them. I want to thank my staff for their hard work. We have a remote worker, Bree Hensley, who does our marketing and communications. My partner in this journey, however, has been Wendy Peel. Raise your hand, Wendy. She's vice president of the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce. Wendy, you make our chamber warm and welcoming, not just for me, but for everybody who walks through the door. I can't say enough about your passion, your dedication, and your tireless work. Thank you for all the laughs, the times of strategy, dangerous times of strategy, especially over finances. And most importantly, thank you for all the hugs you've provided. It's been an honor to serve with you, Wendy. Finally, I'm most grateful for my family. My daughter Courtney is here, Wave Courtney. She's here with her husband Chris, Wave Chris, and their children, Mackenzie, two of their children, Mackenzie and Aleah. My son Tony Jr. is here with his wife Lindsay, Wave Guys, and their daughter Cassidy. My sister Patricia is also here from Chicago. Family, because of you, I don't retire to an empty life. I look forward to dinners and vacations together, chasing after grandchildren and a lot of laughter. Last but not least, I'd like to thank the love of my life, my husband of 46 years, Tony Cornelius. He waved his hand. I didn't ask you to wave your hand, just, just, we've had so many laughs together. That's what we do more than anything. I'm so glad that God saw fit to have us meet on a college campus about 50 years ago. It's been a pleasure to walk through life with you, and I can't wait to see what's around the corner for both of us. Thank you, Morrisville community. It's been an honor to serve as the chamber president. Thank you, Town of Morrisville, all of you. Thank you so much.
Next, we'd like to invite Town Manager Brandon Zudema to come forward for the next recognition. Sir?
Thank you again, Mayor. So good evening again, council. As you know, throughout this year, we have asked each of our departments to come forward and share a little bit more detail about who they are, what they do, what they've accomplished, you know, why they're here and why they're important to the town. And so we saved ourselves for last because I think what you're going to find is that a lot of what we talk about is the work that we do with others. There's not quite as much original work coming out of this group as we are trying to mentor, lead, support others, but we do want to talk through the administration department and share some highlights with you. And then, yes, we won't disappoint. There's a video. I'm going to move this over here. So, and I'm going to move right through this. I think you know us pretty well. I will share with you that the mission statement that is here, that's the leadership team mission statement. So again, not the four of us or the seven of us, but that entire team. We've talked through that a little bit more. We've, we've transitioned from a management team to a leadership team. It brings a little bit of different aura with it, a little bit of different culture with it. So, and again, this is a definition that was created by our leadership team as they transitioned into a leadership team. So that talks about empowering our employees and our stakeholders by fostering a culture of collaboration, transparency, mutual accountability, and innovation to create positive outcomes. And we're going to continue over the next year to talk a lot about outcomes in our community. There is our staff currently of seven. We do have one vacancy that we will fill for a town clerk, but the remainder of that is our current admin team right now. And then at the bottom of that slide, just, I showed some of the icons of the various organizations that one or more of us work with rather consistently in making sure that we're, you know, up to speed on current practices and procedures and that we're sharing information and getting new information across the bottom there. So when you start to talk about accomplishments, this is where, you know, we lean into our departments who do a lot of this work with us and in some cases for us. But I want to run through these mobility enhancements just as a reminder. You've heard about a lot of these, but so much going on in the community to enhance our mobility. The town center is moving to construction. We had an amazing crowd here at 4:30. I, I was thrilled to see that many people with that level of interest, lots of great questions. And again, I would just say again, congratulations to you and thank you to you for your support of that. And we will be putting a shovel in the ground later this summer and see this begin to operate in 2027. So we're excited about that as well. Our language access plan, again, Giselle and certainly Anu, our fellow, and then with now Will's guidance and support from other members of the comms team, have made significant progress on implementation of the, the basics of the language access plan, with just more and more to come from that. Our public safety enhancements, again, thank you for your budgetary commitment to continue to support public safety. Different positions were added in police and fire, equipment was added in police and fire, and again, equipment that, that we need to do our job. And side note, I was talking to Giselle earlier, and she was talking to one of our captains who travels the state a lot doing training, and he said he consistently comes back having heard from others, wow, they do all that for you. So that's a great message to hear and a great message to be able to share about how well you support, and I think we support, our public safety professionals. So thank you for that, and thank you for them. You saw a great example of that tonight of what they do day in and day out. Again, I already spoke to the leadership team. Will mentioned, you'll see a coin there, so that is our leadership team mission champion coin. It has the values on the front and that mission statement on the back, and you don't get that coin unless you earn that coin. So you have to be a town staff member, and you have to be recognized by a peer for exemplary performance in support of the leadership team mission statement and of the town's goals and of our mission and values. So we presented those the first time with our annual service celebration where peers can nominate each other for excellent work, and then they're available throughout the year. And if a department had elects to present one of those, or if a staff member asks for one to present, they fill out a card sharing why they did it, they take a picture, they send it to me, and then we're going to celebrate those throughout the year as well. And then lastly, I would suggest that that all bleeds into culture and values. Again, if you look at the back wall of the room, those are there for a reason, to be reminded of those, have the opportunity to talk about those. I had a chance to meet three of our newest employees this morning in here during launch and brought them the mission statement and then turned them around and had them look at the wall, and we had a great conversation about what those mean individually and what those mean collectively to all of us in terms of what we're accomplishing and trying to accomplish in and with this community. And just some small examples, you know, we, again, we have started our employee advisory group. We now have four members of our staff that are members of the Rotary and participating in that club. And we've also expanded some of our leadership opportunities to include other members of the department in those recurring meeting opportunities. A second slide, there was a lot of accomplishments. We're pretty proud of all this. Sustainability, again, you heard a lot of that through the Public Works presentation, and of course Kimberly was here tonight speaking to a lot of that. So not going to read each of those to you, but a lot of accomplishments going on in sustainability. We are so far ahead of and beyond where we were even three or four years ago that we're very excited to be able to do that and to continue to do that. The FY 2025 budget, again, investing in Morrisville. I felt that we had such a good opportunity to collaborate on that and to communicate on that. And not only did it do a lot of good in FY 2025, but I think it's going to make a conversation at a certain upcoming retreat a little bit easier because of all the time you put in last year, that now we're just updating priorities and updating those conversations versus having to sort of really dig back into that unless, of course, you choose to. But we're going to ask you maybe to consider that. And then the bottom row, or excuse me, the fiscal management, again, you heard a lot of this, but I think it's really important for the community to continue here that we have AAA bond ratings across the board from all three rating agencies. That does not happen a lot of places. We recently did our bond sale at 3.28% interest, and that's, Councilmember Johnson is nodding her head. So why that's important, I think, for the community is it's not just that that's a great rate, but that all of our forecasting is at 5%, expecting that we would have to have a 5% interest rate. So anytime we're below that, we're saving the residents and the taxpayers money. And we're also potentially expanding our ability to do more and to keep up with some of the projects we're already working on. Again, a clean external audit, no issues reported whatsoever, and then we've done some other work on financial policies. And again, you made a significant commitment in this year's budget to fund future investment. And so again, I applaud you for that. Economic Development Director, so Tiffany is here and is hit the ground running. She has got, oh, there she is. Sorry, I have to scan the room. Thank you, Will and Tiffany. So Tiffany has already met so many people and has already established so many good relationships. Really, really excited to get her with you at the retreat for you to hear some of her insights and the work that she's already doing and the conversations that she's having. She is the person we needed and need going forward. So we're really excited about that and glad that we could add that asset to the town, the position, but more importantly, the person. Morrisville Business, again, from the chamber side, a lot of collaboration there, a lot of good work going on, and Tiffany will be adding her Small Business Specialist here in the coming months to continue a lot of that work that went on prior, priorly with the council, excuse me, with the chamber and with a part-time employee. And then also want to thank both Erin, who's here, and Jeannie for all the work they've done to keep that moving sort of in between people. Still a lot of good happening there. And then finally, Duke Energy. You know, that, I want to thank Giselle and certainly Michelle and others on staff that just did an amazing amount of work to build that relationship, to develop that collaboration, to address a significant community concern, to ensure that we could keep growing and have the, the resources we needed to do so. So thank you for your support of that. Thank you particularly to our staff for the work on that. Influences, just very quickly, during this year, certainly staffing, recruitment, and retention continues to be an influence. That does not get any cheaper for us, and it does not get any easier to recruit or retain employees, but we have made steps in that regard, and we'll continue to focus on that and work with you through the budget process to do everything we can to be a good employer. As you are very aware, increasing costs, both in operations and capital, are, is a significant influence on the work that we're doing. We are seeing, starting to see a little bit of relief on some of our projects, which is fantastic, but again, that will continue to be an area we need to focus on. Workload, just the workload of our staff just continues to grow. You know, the, there's so many projects and capital projects that are going on. We literally do budget as a year-round process now. There is no budget season. I mean, budget for '26 started weeks and weeks ago. As a minute, basically, we cleaned up '25, we're already working on '26. And again, we're, we're going to spend a good portion of your retreat, again, talking about things related to budget. We're seeing more legislative impacts that are concerning. And so you've seen, we've had some conversations about Senate Bill 382 and the, the potential impact there, and that's just one of many that we're having to pay more and more attention to what's happening at the state level and also at the federal level that has impact on us as a municipality and our ability to do the good work that we're doing. You know, we obviously continue to have council roundtable and those opportunities to bring forward new ideas and new concepts and requests. And then there's just the unanticipated, who knew we were going to have to deal with that? You know, just comes out of left field and, you know, there, there's nobody standing in the corner with nothing to do, so we figure out who picks that up and we continue running with it. And again, a lot of folks across the town contribute to that, but I would particularly thank our senior leadership team and the members of this administration team, one of those people sitting right in front of me that's, again, doing double duty for us, maybe a little bit of triple duty tonight. But again, people just continue to step up and say, yes, how can I help? Which is what I love about this team. Year one priorities, you know, so in my first year as manager, focused on some things that won't necessarily be ideally as much a focus going forward. You know, we've talked about the leadership team, the values and the culture. We're, we're now embedding that. So while there's maintenance there, it's not the level of work to create some of that. You know, obviously, we had very comprehensive budget discussions that I think will help us for years to come as far as where we're working on that. We have a number of new staff, including myself, in some key positions, and that takes time to get acclimated and develop different working relationships, new council relationships. And then again, we continue to focus on community outreach, particularly through our LAP, the Language Access Plan, and other opportunities. Lastly, communications. We continue to see the necessity for multifaceted communications. We can't use just one or two ways to reach the community. We, we want to continue to build the response that we see from the community. We want to be able to be more effective in reaching out and, and getting, you know, more people to come to meetings and to voice their interests and to fill out studies and other things. So again, that's one of those reasons I was really happy with the turnout tonight for Town Center. I thought that was a good sign, one of the better-attended meetings we've had in a while. Obviously, we know that there are some website limitations, so Will and his team are knee-deep in that now. You'll be asked to be a little bit, maybe ankle-deep in that here coming up to help us with that. And then just limitations with our agenda software, the, the amount of time that we have to put into working through getting these packets and these items and things done just continues to be a little bit of a challenge in terms of the draw on staff. And don't take that the wrong way, it's our job, it's what we're here for, but it's just a lot of work to accomplish, and so we're going to continue to work on that. Current initiatives, Town Center Phase One and Town Center District Branding. We'll be talking to you more specifically about that in the coming months. Economic Development, Strategic Plan, and Small Business Specialist Recruitment is ongoing now. You'll hear more about that at the retreat. We are working towards a leadership academy, particularly related to succession planning and also to training people up to help them stay here, promote here, grow here. You will also be hearing from Erin, I say, in just a few minutes about a strategic plan update. We continue to see the necessity for multifaceted communications. We can't use just one or two ways to reach the community. We want to continue to build the response that we see from the community. We want to be able to be more effective in reaching out and getting, you know, more people to come to meetings and to voice their interests and to fill out studies and other things. So again, that's one of those reasons I was really happy with the turnout tonight for Town Center. I thought that was a good sign, one of the better attended meetings we've had in a while. Obviously, we know that there are some website limitations, so Will and his team are knee-deep in that now. You'll be asked to be a little bit, maybe ankle-deep in that here coming up to help us with that. And then just limitations with our agenda software, the amount of time that we have to put into working through getting these packets and these items and things done just continues to be a little bit of a challenge in terms of the draw on staff. And don't take that the wrong way, it's our job, it's what we're here for, but it's just a lot of work to accomplish. And so we're going to continue to work on that. Current initiatives, Town Center Phase One and Town Center District Branding. We'll be talking to you more specifically about that in the coming months. Economic Development, Strategic Plan and Small Business Specialist Recruitment is ongoing now. You'll hear more about that at the retreat. We are working towards a Leadership Academy, particularly related to succession planning and also to training people up to help them stay here, promote here, grow here. You will also be hearing from Erin, I say, in just a few minutes about a strategic plan update and how we're going to better incorporate data-driven analysis into that. We've had some conversations about some changes on the campus to better utilize our space and to better prepare us for what will be the future in this and other buildings before there's an opportunity for anything new. And then full staffing and consistency over time. We're always aiming to have as many bodies as we can here because it just makes it easier on everybody. So those efforts are there. And again, the support that you lend to staff is, does not go unnoticed, and so we appreciate that. Looking ahead to the coming year or years, again, one of the things we're really excited about is Tiffany's approach with proactive economic development. We'll no longer be in the waiting seat, we'll be in the driving seat. And I've already heard a lot of great ideas and what we're going to work on there. Community redevelopment continues to crawl up on us. We've said for years, it's coming, it's coming, and I think we're starting to see a little bit of it here. So it's no longer a five-year-from-now issue, it's, we're starting to see it already. And that's, that's not good or bad, that's just we need to be prepared for it and understand it and utilize it to our advantage as much as possible. Long-term operational sustainability. So I've been talking with some of my peers and have been talking with some of you that, you know, we've got to continue to look ahead and appreciate what our limitations are, what our restrictions are, what our needs are, what our growth will be, to make sure that we can sustain what we're doing today in the future, depending particularly on how this community develops and builds out and other things. So that is certainly on our radar and there will be conversations with you coming up about that. Capital project needs and prioritization, I'll just leave that there. And then again, I've already mentioned the impact of state and federal legislation, don't expect that to go away. Top right corner, apiary at Fire Station 3, just in case you're interested. So some statistics, our team of seven has 140 years of local government experience. And Letnys only got like 100 of those, so the rest of us have got, you know, a good bunch as well. So we developed, just I think out of interest, how many hours that we spent in council meetings with you this year? 120. So we should be really, really good friends at this point, having spent 120 hours together in 12 months. And a 15% increase over last year where it was 105 hours. Again, our most recent investment, $19 million in the Town Center project, very excited about that. Over to the right side, number Advisory Committee meetings that were scheduled versus held. So we scheduled 59 this year and we held 46 of those, so 78%. So that seems a little low, but it is actually improving from prior years. We've had quite a bit of conversation about that through the Advisory Board, policy discussions, and we continue to work on that. Erin and I were just talking today about what the monthly Advisory Committee report that will come to you going forward will look like. And you've given us some really good feedback and we're excited to be consistently sharing that information with you. Total number of public records requests, so we actually went down this year. We have 64 to date. We had 101 last year, so that's a pretty significant decrease from last year. And then on the right-hand side, it shows you our average response on public records requests. So general statute basically requires 25 days, give or take. And so we average 12 and a half days and we answer 31% of public records requests in one day. So we try to be as responsive as we can to those. And then lastly, total hours spent on the council agenda by the administrative team in 2024. This is not our departments, this is not other staff, this is the seven of us or really the six, because Tiffany's had a limited time with us this year, 1,200 hours spent preparing agendas. And I just say that for awareness, that that's, you know, when you look at the number of people and the number of hours, there is a lot of work that goes into making sure that these meetings run the way they do. You know, I talk about the values. So if you look at our values in action, dedication, you know, I would call out again, Erin going above and beyond, bringing stability to the clerk's office for us this year and now into next year. Thank you, Erin. And then, you know, Giselle is one example, actively connecting with staff to better understand their roles and contributions, any number of ways she does that. But if you're ever on or around Fire Station 1 in the morning, you're going to see her virtually every morning exercising with the fire recruits, every morning. Getting to know them, getting to know, letting them get to know her, know who we are. So little things matter. And that seems like a little thing, but that's just one example of what many members of our team do to make sure that we are demonstrating our dedication to this council, to this community and to our team. Integrity, again, you know, we deal with any variety of confidential information. Unfortunately, sometimes that's personnel matters, other times that's economic development information. But that is always handled confidentially and never, ever have had an issue with that. Courtesy, Bianca unfortunately had a family issue and couldn't be here, but I would mention that she is potentially the friendliest person you will ever meet. And she uses that when she interacts with the community and with visitors to Town Hall and in responding to others. So she's a great face of the town in that sense. And then innovation, again, Tiffany's been fantastic, already shown some innovative ideas that I don't think any of us would have had because it's not, you know, what we do. And that's the beauty of having someone that that is what they do and that is what they're trained on and that is what they understand. So what to her, I think, is just taking care of business to us is innovation, and that's Have to have the obligatory "Did you know"? So one member of our team of seven was born in Germany.
I was going to say Tiffany, but I don't know, it's just a gift.
Would you like to raise your hand? That would be Tiffany. One member of our team had a rather substantial hat collection. That would be me. I have, as my wife describes it, some issues. This team member was once a judge for a state fair wine competition. That does have John written all over it. We'll just leave that there. This team member is a singer-songwriter with multiple recordings.
Erin or Giselle? I can't decide.
It is going to be Giselle. One member of our team attended an art school and learned to draw, sing, dance and play That is actually Bianca. A very varied background. One member of our team grew up learning how to raise crops, care for horses and had a pet goat named Licorice. That would be Jeannie, correct. And then lastly, as a child, this team member was obsessed with dinosaurs and becoming a paleontologist. That would be Erin. And then the last thing down in the corner, just a list of the variety of sort of senior training and advanced training that our team has gone through over the years to help us be where we are today. And with that, I will end the presentation, just some photos there. Again, you will see, recognize this hopefully as a compass, and that's going to be a little prelude into our video. You will recall that when you were kind enough to offer me this position and swear me in, one of the gifts I received was a compass. And speaking to the leadership of how we, you know, lead and work with the town and our staff and our community. So with the help, of course, of Rocks, we're going to play on the compass a little bit and we're going to show you our video. Imagine a ship navigating vast waters, its bow cutting through waves, charting a course toward a shared horizon. Just as a ship's crew must work in unison to stay on course, we must collaborate, adapting to challenges and opportunities. Because while the route may be similar to others, every journey has its own unique story. Sometimes there will be calm seas where progress feels effortless. And other times there will be storms, unforeseen challenges that test our resolve.
But what each ship has in common, no matter the size, is a compass. This small little contraption that can fit in the palm of your hand guides an entire crew to the destination. Without a compass, the direction is unknown. And everyone and everything aboard the ship are floating without purpose. The job of town administration is to serve as a compass for Morrisville, guiding staff, residents and council to a destination filled with purpose and ensuring that we stay on a path of alignment with our vision, mission and values. The compass remains constant.
We lead south when we work together to help our team succeed by providing clear direction, acknowledging accomplishments and offering encouragement when challenges arise. We foster open communication, genuinely considering input from all staff and ensuring that every member of our organization feels supported and valued.
We lead east and west when we serve the community by listening to their concerns, understanding their needs and finding solutions that enhance their quality of life. We mentor others within our organization, transforming management into leadership, encouraging creativity and driving forward strategic growth that benefits everyone in the town.
We lead north by taking ownership of the trust placed in us by the town council and actively working beside them with integrity, transparency and a shared commitment to the town's prosperity. We make informed, decisive decisions, taking responsibility for our actions and continuously working to redirect when adjustments are necessary.
At the center of this compass, representing our collective leadership, lies a crucial focus, enhancing the workplace culture throughout the entire organization. This means encouraging creative initiatives, nurturing relationships and promoting shared decision-making. By strengthening these foundational elements, we ensure that every direction of leadership, north, south, east and west, is supported by a vibrant collaborative environment where all voices are valued.
Together, we must remain strong, unified and focused to lead effectively and intentionally in all four directions. By celebrating our accomplishments, working collaboratively and bringing out the best in one another, we maximize our influence and create a thriving, forward-moving town where we can live connected and live well.
Look, bro, are we the ones driving the ship or are they driving the ship?
Nah, chief, we're still guiding, steering, driving the ship, whatever Jeffrey wants us to say. It's just, add me to compass in there.
Bro, I'm just not getting it.
Well, I mean, guys, it's just a metaphor. It's a metaphor.
We're glad to wrap these up. I need to take just a minute again to thank Will and particularly Rocks. These are really fun, but they don't happen by themselves. And so we won't be repeating these next year because I'm afraid that, well, Rocks will just quit and we don't want that. But we do appreciate you letting us have this opportunity this year to show you more about who we are, what we're accomplishing, and not just you, but the community. I mean, you see a lot of us from time to time and I think it's easy to lose sight of the people in the mix of all these accomplishments and all these outcomes and all this work. So thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Mayor Pretam Garamilla?
Two comments. One, in your leadership team, one person or two people I did not see is a town attorney and this one. So I was kind of surprised not seeing them in that.
Well, they're technically part of your leadership team, if you'd like to look at it. They support us incredibly, but they're technically your leadership team.
Okay, then we'll take it on our side.
Yeah, your video can be nice if you want. No, just kidding, no.
And on a funny note, you know, Giselle is going and working out with the fire department. Is John, are you going to do with the police department?
Well, so John supervises the police department. So that would be his responsibility. I'm hanging out with other people that don't exercise quite as much apparently, so.
Jeff is a good example. All right, that's it, thank you.
Okay, I think you're off the hook.
Thank you.
Actually, I lied. Councilmember Johnson.
So, I'm sorry. So we, I've said this all year, these presentations have been fabulous because we get to see folks in departments we don't normally see. Clearly, we see all of you a whole lot, but I got one bone to pick on your facts. 120 hours in council meetings? Are you sure that, does that include all the work sessions and the budget work sessions? There's got to be more than 120 hours.
That did not include the retreat or any meetings there. It did include any regularly scheduled meetings or work sessions.
Wow, I really thought that number was going to be higher, quite frankly. But anyhow, it is an important time to say thank you. Thank you to the leadership team for all that you do. We appreciate you very, very much, so thank you.
Thank you. We're proud to be here.
Councilmember Abadi?
Yeah, so what's in the works on the 1,200 hours that you all are spending getting ready for these meetings, the agenda prep? Because I appreciate, I mean, our meetings run very smoothly and I get the agenda well in advance and I really appreciate that. But it seems like, do you have a plan to address that going forward?
We do. So I think some of that is how we handle agenda review. And so we're looking to, I think the word might be modernize that process a little bit. We're looking at the software we currently use. That was, there was a reference to that in the presentation. There's some efficiency opportunities there related to using SharePoint and some other things, so we're looking at that. Again, I think having a full-time clerk throughout a year would help us tremendously. You know, we had quite a bit of transition last year. We went with Out and then we went with Michelle, Michelle Twells, when she was here to support us. And then, you know, we transitioned into the former clerk and then now we're back to working with Erin. And again, it's also Bianca's really first full year as a deputy clerk as well. So consistency is going to come and that workload is going to reduce, but it's not going to reduce, you know, completely or necessarily significantly because there's just a lot that goes into making sure that what you see here is smooth and does manage to maximize ideally your time and make it more efficient. And I know that feels like that's not always the case when we're here after 10 o'clock, but that is us trying to do our best to make it the least painful we can on you and make sure that you're fully informed.
Yes, we are all very thankful for you and the whole staff, everybody. It's a great team, you're creating a great culture, it's very family-oriented and I think you're doing a great job, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I see. Excellent. Now we're at item 10, public address. Interim Town Clerk, Ms. Hudson, anyone signed up for public address?
Yes, sir, thank you, mayor. We have one person signed up for public address, Stephanie Reed.
Okay. Ms. Reed, if you could announce your name and your residential address. Actually, we use the other microphone, if you wouldn't mind. That's how we roll. You'll have three minutes. The timer will go off when you reach three. If you have not finished at that point, if you could just finish that last thought, you're always welcome to email us your complete thoughts, but I'm sure you're good, you've done this before.
My name is Stephanie Reed and I reside at 1672 Legendary Lane. I'm here to express my opposition to the proposed 226 annual solid waste collection fee per address due to several concerns. Morrisville is projected to have a budget surplus this fiscal year. And as you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, that the solid waste, GFL, is reduce the fee compared to last year. I just don't understand why there's, we're even concerned this fee, it seems unnecessary. Lack of transparency. This fee lacks clear allocation for specific services, raising questions about its necessity. It appears the council is adding this fee without resident voting, unlike a bond. The financial impact, this fee would increase my taxes by 5% and it disproportionately affects families with smaller homes. And then the recent tax increases, my family is still adjusting to recent tax hikes from Wake County and the town, making this additional fee burdensome. The town council represents all Morrisville citizens and I believe this fee hinders the prosperity for all residents. Please consider removing this fee from consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hudson, anyone else signed up?
No, sir, that was everyone.
Okay. We provide the opportunity, anyone in the room who failed to sign up, you're welcome to address the spotty at this time if you're interested. Seeing none, we will move on. Seeing none, we will move on. Our next item is public hearings. We have one public hearing previously opened at the November 26 meeting and remains open for a resolution adopting the 2024 Wake County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan on this evening's agenda. Fire Chief Luzinski will now provide any updates on this item.
Good evening, council, and thank you, Mayor, for saying that so I don't have to. Nathan Luzinski, Fire Chief. This is round two of our conversation regarding the hazard mitigation plan. There are some updates, just two quick ones. I added some slides to the PowerPoint to sort of talk about the section that Councilwoman Fender asked about, really starting on slide 12. And I can go through any of this again, but I'll go straight to the additional parts that we added. As a reminder, we talked about, if I can get there, the critical facilities. You had some discussion or you had some comments about that. And I really wanted to clarify basically what they are and what they provide to the mitigation strategy. Critical facilities, when they're identified, they're really community lifelines. They're sort of that foundational and the fundamental services that community needs and really in times, in any time, whether that's in an emergency or just during normal times of the year similar to this. They're used in both the preparedness and the response and the recovery phases. And then, considering this conversation is taking place in a mitigation strategy, it's also taken there. So, those are the four phases of emergency management. So, really, they kind of facilitate and they help in a lot of the different emergency management conversations. So, those community lifelines, they're defined as they're pretty much put into eight different buckets. And they're really those, let me move this so it's out of the way. They really allow that continuous of operation, as I said, both in normal times and in emergency settings. When we do a risk analysis, we want to sort of identify, as that map represented, all of those community lifelines so that when we have to build the strategies associated with emergency management, we know what they are, and we know how to prepare, protect, and get them recovered so that the community can thrive on them. I think it goes back to what Mayor Protam talked about with the IV location. If they did not know where that was, they could not have provided the infrastructure to that place to keep that, keep those IVs flowing, those bags flowing. So, in a mitigation strategy, you would identify that. You would put that on the map, and then that would be supported in every phase. I think that's so, that would fall into one of the eight buckets you see there. Clearly, those buckets are water, you know, food, shelter, those type of necessities we all need. From a hazard material perspective, you're going to want to identify those to strengthen that so that you can mitigate that or you can help respond to those if there's a flood or anything like that. So, we sort of put those in those three, eight buckets. So, as you would expect, and this is over the next couple of slides, is those are defined and those better are sort of from a macro level brought to a micro level. And what does that mean from an energy lifeline or food and whatnot? So, the power grid, the fuel, those are put into subcomponents so that you can better strengthen each subcomponent because they really kind of need different infrastructure. They need different support in both the mitigation, the preparedness, the recovery, and the response phases. Again, further breaking those down, and these are just examples. This is pretty much FEMA's recommendation on how you would break those down. So, if we were looking back at that map, these are the symbols that we saw on there. One of the things from FEMA's perspective, they take a pretty broad perspective over what those subcomponents would be. When we build our community risk assessment in the fire department, we can define that better what that means for Morrisville. So, we would identify in each station, police could have their beats. We could kind of show those infrastructures and how we want them represented. This is obviously a very collaborative approach with countywide municipalities and the state FEMA. So, you get kind of FEMA's perspective on it. But the risk analysis and identifying the needs of the community are just the same when we build our own internal documents. So, this sort of subcomponents you would see in both of our guiding documents from a risk assessment internally. Again, just breaking another example down, the food, hydration, and shelter. This is FEMA's perspective on what that would look like. I mean, this, I mean, it kind of makes sense, right? You're going to want to identify these locations so that when you're starting to prepare the response or the recovery, you want to be able to support the quick infrastructure improvements that are needed to get these up and running. So, as I said, it helps with all the phases of emergency management. And each one of them is different. So, in a mitigation, you're going to modernize anything you can. You're going to really want to, you know, identify the vulnerabilities and guide the policies, collaboration efforts. You know, you're going to want to make sure you're going to know where you're going to put the debris, and if we get a lot of debris, or you're going to want to make sure that you're going to have your, sort of, your infrastructure built for dams or whatever so that it supports that. Obviously, from a response perspective, you're going to want to make sure that when we have, when we send our staff to the mountains, they show up and they're like, what do you want us to do? Someone's got to have a game plan. And if you don't know where these critical infrastructures and lifelines are, you can't provide this guidance to all of this, all these people and this equipment that's coming to you. So, this provides, from a response perspective, how we can delineate that and get that moving so that we can support, you know, we have life safety, incident stabilization, and property conservation. Those are our three priorities in a response perspective. You need to know where all of that is so you can quickly get things moving. And then, from a recovery perspective, again, you're going to want to restore these critical services. Again, if you don't know where they are, how are you going to be able to restore them? So, and really, just sort of enhancing that coordination, as I said, when you get those individuals coming in with the equipment. I went over that pretty quickly. Do you have any other questions about that, that that strengthens?
Mayor Protam Garamilla?
So, this is excellent. I just wanted to know how much of these plans helped in the recent hurricane, you know, clean?
Yeah, I don't, I didn't see that those counties, one of the things is when it affects 25 counties, and every county is required to have a mitigation plan, it takes that state level. That's why they supported us in building it. So, they have plan input. These type of mitigation strategies, this helps tremendously because, as I said, you can get those people quickly out there. When our staff went out west, they showed up to a distribution site. So, that distribution site was already predetermined because of the critical facilities and lifelines that were identified. All right, let's get the water to this warehouse that's been identified that is near most of the residents that need the help quickest. So, you can game plan, pre-plan all of that based on these critical lifelines.
Thank you.
And then, Mayor Protam, I talked to some stormwater and the senior leadership, specifically Giselle. So, if you have any questions, she's over there. We talked about your dam, and this really identifies the dam, and it allows us to sort of put this on the map and make sure that, from a risk perspective, we have identified that hazard. From a competency of the dam and the structural integrity, sir. Okay. It was worth a try, right? I admire that. I respect that. So, that's all the update I have on this PowerPoint? If you have any other questions or?
I don't see any further questions or clarifications. So, I think we're in good shape.
Yeah, so, pause back in your quarter.
Okay. Do we have anyone signed up for the continued public hearing?
No, Mayor, we have no one signed up.
Okay. And that's been well-publicized and everything. So, I'd entertain a motion at this time to close the public hearing, if that's the will of the council.
Make the motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion, Councilmember Johnson, a second from Councilmember Abadi. All those in favor of opposing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously 6-0. Is there a motion and a second to approve the resolution? And if we could have that bottom of the screen, that might help some of us.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, please.
I move that we adopt Resolution 2024-366-0, authorizing Wake County Hazard Mitigation Plan 2024 update.
Second from Councilmember Abadi, a second from Councilmember Fender. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That carries unanimously 6-0. Thank you very much for your hard work and the team.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay. At this time, we are scheduled for a 10-minute break. So, if we could reconvene at 7:51, please do so. Thank you.
To bring this group back into session, our next item is action items, number 12. We invite Police Chief Acosta forward to brief counsel on this next item, please. It looks like you have reinforcements as well.
I got reinforcements. Good evening, counsel. I do want to introduce our presenters, Captain Brad Shirley and Lieutenant Josh Allman. We also have our Axon partners here with us as we need a mayor, council. Certainly want to extend a appreciation for this opportunity to present what we think is a worthy project for the police department. Let me drop this. Thank you. So we've come before you here to seek your, I guess, approval from the town manager into a contract for our NCAR and body worn camera upgrade systems. And so we'll go through a few slides to kind of give you a little bit of history of where we've been as an agency, where we've been in the past, and how we got here to this point. So speaking specifically about our body cam, body worn cameras, 2020, we implemented WatchGuard body worn camera systems to complement our already NCAR systems that were supplied by WatchGuard. Current need, our equipment is outdated. And again, this is when we talk about the town's equipment replacement plan, we believe this project aligns with that. And again, we'll talk about the budgetary and some of the funding that we've already have received to go towards this project. So again, a little bit of our history. Back in 2017 was the first year that the Morrisville Police Department entered into a, with WatchGuard for their NCAR systems. We found out in 2019 was that Motorola Solutions had purchased WatchGuard. In the year 2020, again, we implemented our body worn camera program. And then two years later, we learned that the existing body worn cameras from WatchGuard were no longer being supported nor manufactured by Motorola since they had purchased WatchGuard. Sorry there, in 2024, we started securing funding for this replacement project. So our current body worn camera system, again, we use this for our incident reviews, use of force analysis, and complaint resolutions. Again, so it's a partner to a partner with the community, our camera systems, and also internally helps us with training, helps us identify areas of improvement, but also probably more importantly, it's accountability to the public. Some operational challenges that we have faced, these include equipment failures, some obsolete storage, and then also the discontinuation of the product. Yeah, a lot of information on our research. Again, I'm not going to read everything, but we went through a bid process, and then we did a bid review, and the ultimate outcome of that bid review was to reject all the bids. We kind of went back to the drawing table to try to find solutions that better meet our needs. And again, really worked hard with the vendor to come up with a good solution for the Morrisville Police Department. So when we talk about Axon, some of the, I guess, positives that we have, it's an integrated system. With that, it means it integrates with other Axon products that we have. If we talk about our tasers, again, obviously, last month, the approval of our report management system software. So we'll have a seamless integration between all Axon products if this contract is approved. Cloud-based storage, so we'll go away from a server-based storage and get to a cloud-based that really just is basically unlimited storage for a lot of our, all of our electronic data, both internal and external data points that we have. Again, some future-proof technology, one of the things that, you know, impresses us with Axon is they are, they're leading the industry, and they really have some cutting-edge technology. And then when you look at some of the things they have planned that haven't even been marketed yet, but they're researched, it's only going to tend to grow. And so we'll talk about some of those things where I answer questions about, but just generally speaking, artificial intelligence, as you know, is a driving force. And what we're seeing now, there's some abilities with some of the Axon products to introduce AI to really help officers improve efficiencies with report writing. For instance, with body cameras, the system will actually, based on the video that's recorded, start writing the incident report for the officers. And we're talking about improving efficiencies and reducing report writing time up to 40%, which means officers get back out on the street. So this is one of the things that we're looking towards with this project for the future for our officers. And again, talk about our community trust. We certainly using this as an accountability tool for us, but also the community, again, kind of brings us together. We're transparent in our operations. Again, spoke on some of this, but the advantages with Axon, the cloud storage, future-ready features, community trust, and integration. Of course, we want to align with Morrisville's values. We talk about dedication, high-quality services through advanced technology, integrity, transparent operations that builds public confidence, courtesy, professionalism in all community interactions, and innovation, again, cutting-edge tools for public safety. So some funding and budget considerations, total cost of this project is $629,497. This total cost is $136,843 less than the initial bid that we had. We have secured grant funding from the U.S. Department of Justice and from Congressperson Ross's office to the total of $193,538 to go towards this project. There is $73,538 in matching funds from the town budget. Public Works has been a tremendous partner, and we have $146,927 from Public Works from their allocation. And again, we have a recurring funds through fiscal year '29 for $48,000. One thing about, when we speak about body cameras, there's a mid-contract replacement of body worn cameras. So at year two, is that correct? Two and a half? Yeah, year two and a half, we will get a brand-new set of body cameras and docking stations for every officer. So the cameras they get today in two and a half years, they will turn it in and get a brand-new camera. And so that keeps us, again, wear and tear on body cameras. It depends be out in the elements, the weather. We're not exactly the, maybe we're a little bit better than the fire department when it comes to damaging equipment, but we can be rough on equipment. So again, the body worn camera and NCAR camera systems are included in the town of Morrisville's equipment replacement schedule, and these systems will remain as planned replacements as needed or as shelf life requires. Then it's kind of a breakdown of our funding strategy, and it kind of shows it through year one through year five. Overall, what I'd like to point out is that there is only $1,032 that we need to account for in this year. Rest of the money is funded through budget and through grants. And again, we're asking council to approve a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute a contract with Axon in the amount of $629,497. With your blessing and approval, these are kind of the next steps that we will take of implementing this project. And with that, I'll answer any questions or defer to my support staff here for any questions.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for the presentation. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, followed by Mayor Tim Garamilla.
Thank you. So, excuse me. I'm all about interoperability and integration, but it seems like with this and our RMS system, we're going to be putting an awful lot of eggs in the Axon basket. So I was hoping that you could tell me a little bit more about the company. Are they publicly or privately held? Are they ripe for acquisition at any point, like has happened with Motorola and WatchGuard? So can you just tell me a little bit about the company itself?
If permissible, could I ask Axon representatives to speak to that?
Yeah, that'd be great. They probably know.
Yes. In Axon, we're off for four years now. Just to quickly answer your question, Axon is publicly traded. So we have been, we went live about 2021 at the beginning of that year. So we have no intentions of being acquired in any future negotiations. We've actually acquired multiple different vendors throughout this year, including Fuses for real-time prime management software, as well as multiple drone organizations, D-Drone, DroneSense, for additional assistance with integrating more technologies into the Axon ecosystem to grow that process, as Cal will say.
Okay. And then what's the trend line in your profit margins over the past? You said you started up in '21?
As a company, 1993.
Oh, okay. Oh, much better.
I was holding the stock in 2021. But yes, I was predicting 30% year-over-year growth.
Okay, so you went public in '21, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. But have you been developing this type of technology all along and just growing with the market, or?
Great question. We actually started out originally as TASER International. So that was the name of the company with the TASER devices specifically. Around the midway point of '29, '210, we started into the body worn camera program. And as Captain mentioned, we have become the market leader in the space for both body worn and NCAR camera systems. Throughout the state of North Carolina, we do support the majority of the agencies throughout the state, including Charlotte Eckler, Cary, close one like Apex, Garner, Durham, quite a few others.
Okay. And your records manage, I know we're not on the topic right now of records management system, but since you're here, your records management system is the one that interfaces with the district attorney's office, correct?
Yes, ma'am. So the district attorney's office went live with Evidence.com, which is our cloud-based platform, for the entirety of digital evidence management sharing throughout the entire state.
And just refresh my memory, what's the information storage strategy? Is it all cloud-based storage?
It is entirely cloud-based storage, yes.
I'm a big fan of cloud-based storage. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Tim Garamilla, followed by Councilmember Scruggins.
Yeah, I'll just, you know, pick up on where she started. Like, I looked at the stock, the stock doubled in two years. And I want to take maybe a part, it's $400 or something, the stock, I'll check it out. But my question is regarding the storage, is it the cloud diagnostic, or is it like you have a certain carrier that you have?
So we built our cloud up from the ground up through AWS, so Azure Web Services. So it is completely hosted by Axon. We have three additional server spaces throughout the country, plus a disaster recovery.
No, 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 I get that. You know, I do a lot of that. But the key I'm saying is is it cloud agnostic tomorrow? Axon will say, hey, AWS is too expensive, will you go to Google or Azure, you know?
In terms of movement strategy, I have not been informed of anything like that. I would not know. Have we got to get your verification on that?
And more like, nothing, you know, I'm all for it, but for my personal information, is there data sharing among all the departments, like all the other towns too? The reason I say that is data sharing when you're using AI, and especially, I was closely following the UnitedHealth CEO, like, you know, the guy they were chasing. So with all the strategies just going on, is AI involved in recognizing facial recognition that is shared across all jurisdictions because, or how does it work?
Yes. So it would not be inherently shared, just off of that. You would have to do that share as a manual process, but it is absolutely shareable throughout any agency, whether it's somewhere local or somewhere across the country.
So that they come to you to share, not from the town?
They would go directly through the agency's Evidence.com instance. So they would have access to share that data, depending on the individual at the agency's roles and permissions within the system that they would set up.
Okay, so it's readily available if someone could ask.
Yes, it is readily available to whoever would need it, as long as they have the permissions within the system.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scruggins.
Thank you. A very thoughtful and thorough presentation. I really appreciate the support of Congressperson Deborah Ross and her office in our efforts to obtain a replacement device for to obtain a replacement device for our entire team. My question relates to disaster recovery. We had a theme this evening where we were talking about disasters and having people available and the information available. What kind, if the cloud service goes offline, because we won't have servers, what is the standard service level? Is it, we would recover any information within twelve hours, twenty-four hours? Do you, do you have that kind of detail for access to records if there was a disruption of service?
I did, I would defer if you had.
Are you saying, just in reference to losing connectivity to a cloud-based server in general, or are you saying actually the loss of data?
Well, both. You know, disasters do happen, but also you could go offline. There could be an interruption of, you know, AT&amp;T or Verizon, so that we would lose connection, and we would still have people out in the community, and they would have to backtrack or, or look up records later. Is there, you know, like, if we go down, would we be up again within twenty-four hours, or how much, you know, gap with the country?
Yeah, great question. Just from a historic standpoint, we have never gone down in the over fifteen years that we have maintained Evidence.com as our main platform. From a disaster recovery standpoint, if data was lost, again, we have three additional data points, start facilities throughout the United States, plus a disaster recovery station in Dallas, Texas. From my understanding, again, being here for four years and having run Evidence.com for over fifteen, we have never lost any data. Plus, again, we have never gone down. If it was to go down, none of the camera systems as they were would stop to function. It would just be a reversion to go back and complete any management that you would need on the backend, which is always available.
So there is some local storage on the cameras themselves?
Yes, sixty gigabytes on each of the actual physical piece of heart.
Very good. Thank you.
So, yeah, sorry, I think I have one bit, to just follow up on that, like, I would not ever say we never lost in fifteen years, you know? Axon might be, but AWS goes down all the time, Azure goes down all the time. Their ninety-nine point nine-nine is never met, you know? I worked at a pharma where we see those problems daily, and even AWS recently, the entire East Coast was gone. So the reason is not about the video, but I'm more interested about the other contracts, especially the records and everything, because they are all electronic and they directly flow into cloud. If the police officers cannot connect to the cloud, what is their backup there?
So we do have evidence management as well. That can be locally done on a cell phone, it can be done on the computer. From a holistic management platform, you do need access to Evidence.com, which again will be through your cloud-based instance. It can be accessed from a web browser, wherever it may be. As long as the platform is up and running, you have full access to it. But as well, the in-car system also has a dedicated server built into it. That will be the Axon hub that sits in the back of the vehicle, that stores data, I believe it's a terabyte of data. If something was to go down, and maybe let's say for an hour or two, data was not able to be uploaded, it would still be managed and housed on that server, and so it was able to offload it to a trail monitor back to the vehicle.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that seems to be all the questions that we had. Thank you very much for the presentation. I think this is a good solution moving forward personally, but if no one has any other comments, I entertain a motion to approve this resolution. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Johnson.
So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-four dash three-eight-seven dash zero of the Morrisville Town Council authorizing a contract with Axon for body-worn and in-car camera system upgrade.
Motion, Councilmember Johnson, a second from Councilmember Robati. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
At this time, we're at item thirteen, items with updates. We have one item scheduled for an update this evening. This item is scheduled for council action at the January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting. We invite Planning Manager Brittany Johnson forward to provide an updated details on the item.
Good evening, mayor and council. I bring before you again, an application proposing a major modification to the existing Park West Village PD. This item last appeared on council's agenda on October twenty-second, at which time council voted to continue that item. The item is before you for a check-in tonight. Council is scheduled to take action on this item on January fourteenth. During the October twenty-second meeting, council also agreed to a series of small group meetings with the applicant and staff prior to returning to council tonight for this check-in. Three small group meetings were held on November thirteenth, fourteenth, and nineteenth. A full meeting summary document concerning those three meetings are attached to tonight's agenda. They are labeled as Attachment Eight. As a result of these small group meetings, the applicant has updated their proposal related and those, one condition related to workforce housing, and proposed a new condition related to an additional shuttle stop. I will have the applicant come forward and discuss those in detail. Did you have any questions for staff prior to the applicant coming forward to discuss those changes?
I do not see any indication that anyone has any questions at this time.
All right, I will now invite the applicant forward.
Good evening. My name's David Brenner. I'm here to represent Casto. We just want to say thank you to staff, mayor, and council for the number of meetings and time that everybody has put into this over the last, you know, forty-five days to kind of regroup and understand and look at the changes, and really get to where we are with the condition modifications, which Brittany's talked about, and we agree that our line. Tom unfortunately was not able to be here tonight, but he did want to say thank you for your time. He had surgery on Thursday and is not mobile at this point, so, so I just wanted to fill in on behalf of Casto and just again say thank you, and if you do have any questions, I'm here to ask, to answer those.
Just to go over some of those changes, so first, for condition twenty-seven, it was altered, again, what was previously proposed, fifteen percent workforce housing for a period of thirty years, and that would be at eighty percent AMI. The updated condition just reads that a minimum of ten percent of the new residential units shall be rented at a rate of affordable housing for eighty percent AMI, and then a minimum of five percent of the one-bedroom units would be at a rate of sixty percent AMI. As well as, again, that commitment would be for thirty years, that has remained consistent. As well as condition twenty-nine was added, and that is that the applicant is looking to add an additional smart shuttle stop, and that would be conditional upon the shuttle service remaining on demand. However, if it were to switch to a fixed route, that would, would not be, be possible. So those were the two updates. Again, condition twenty-seven was, was altered, and condition twenty-nine was added.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Skarren Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati.
Thank you, mayor. I would just like to say a few words about the modifications to the conditions that were set forward post those meetings that we had just a few weeks ago. I really do appreciate the time that the applicant has taken over the various amounts of months, but most importantly, to understand and really listen to what our community is concerned about with affordable housing and workforce housing and the rising costs of living in our town, and what we can work on together to try to help support and lower some barriers to people that really want to work and live and play in our town. And I think condition twenty-seven does, with the modifications, it, it does reach out to people that would not necessarily be eligible or able to afford a home in Morrisville. And it's a great step to see this modification. And then the second one is about transportation, and I am very much a proponent of the Morrisville shuttle and access to various parts of our town, and also to the greater CARRY transit system, and by looking in opportunities to not only, you know, give access to individuals that would live there to the shuttle system, but also visitors and other participants in the event. So this does also reach out to bringing the community together and, I guess you would say, activating this area. So I'm very pleased to see these new conditions.
Councilmember Robati, please.
I have a question on condition twenty-nine. What does it mean when you say that if implemented, this stop would not be for fixed route service and could be removed if the shuttle, the smart shuttle switches to a fixed route model? I mean, I obviously know what the words mean, but what is the, what's the intent behind that provision?
Yeah, and this is Nellie H. Attorney with the Moore's Log Group, Representative Casto. I thought that question might come up. So in our discussions about this condition, it's our understanding that there are different design requirements for fixed route transit stops versus a on-demand stops, and there are, evidently there are discussions going on right now, looking at the smart shuttle to see if it would become, or if it makes sense to convert it to a fixed, fixed route facility, I guess. That having been said, it's also my understanding that if there, if, if the smart shuttle is converted to a fixed route program, then there are also requirements for there to be point-to-point service. So I think the stop would still operate as a point-to-point service, but would not operate as part of the fixed route, because, essentially because of the design requirements for a fixed route stop.
So are you, but I would imagine that we would have to make the same modifications to all of the, the on-demand stops, to turn them into fixed routes. I don't actually, I'm not familiar with the design criteria that you're talking about, but, but are you saying that the applicant would not want that stop to be a fixed, would not want those modifications made to turn it into a fixed route stop?
That is essentially what I'm saying. To be clear, the other smart shuttle stop that is part of this project is designed, it could, it could be used as a fixed route stop. So that's, that's not what we're making. I can't speak to any of the other stops, you know, not at Park West Village for, for the smart shuttle, but that, yeah, that's essentially part of the discussion. This stop would be added, but because of the, essentially, we can't fit a fixed route stop at this location. But it does make sense for a point-to-point, or at this point, a on-demand stop, something that can fit in this location.
Okay. And then just for benefit of the public who wasn't able to attend the meetings that we attended with Casto, could either you or the applicant speak to the types of entertainment businesses that you would be, not recruiting, that you would be trying to fill that corridor with once it was redeveloped?
Sure. The space that we're envisioning would is designed, well, I shouldn't say designed, is sized appropriately for, you know, various, what I would call entertainment uses that might include, like, a brewery with, like, arcade, bowling alley, that type of thing. I don't know that it would be the appropriate size for something as big as, like a Dave and Buster's, but, you know, that type of use, their boxcar, you know, they're, they're a entertainment, many that's, that's generally located downtown areas, might have been one in Raleigh or downtown Durham, they have, they are looking at more suburban markets to expand their products, so that, that's something that, something like that would fit in this location. I don't know if you want to touch on that.
Yeah, so it would definitely be larger scale. Currently, we don't have the square footage in a larger space on our main street, so we're looking at spaces that are eight to twelve thousand square feet for a single user that could do a combination of small food, kind of food hall, brewery, duck pen bowling, not bowling alley, but like duck pen, you know, arcade-type stuff, as kind of an auxiliary, but really more of that driver of our entertainment that we currently don't have available in that main street, you know, drive.
Yeah, I thought that that, I, the first that I heard of that was at the meeting that we had with Casto on the thirteenth, and I think that that goes a long way toward addressing some of council's concerns about the, the play aspect or the entertainment aspect being taken out of that space. And I think, I, I was very pleased to hear that that was the plan for the new space. Also, I, this probably isn't a question for you, do you know, Brandon, how much affordable housing we currently have in Morrisville that is priced at sixty percent AMI? Do we have any?
I'm not aware of any. I'm, I'm looking to Michelle, and I think she's confirming we don't have any affordable housing currently at sixty percent AMI.
Okay. Because I appreciate that addition also. I think that that, I really do think that moves the needle on affordable housing in Morrisville. So, thank you.
No, I do, I do have to agree. I mean, we look at this all over, and Morrisville is not only the only community that, you know, obviously has a workforce housing and accountability, you know, model issue with keeping people local that work here. And again, as we look to redevelopment and the jobs that we're looking at creating, it also provides an opportunity for those, you know, those employees to be able to live and not have to travel forty-five minutes or, or an hour. You know, we did look also at kind of the, the community pod, you know, units where it's kind of shared, which I know is a question. We did look at that, you know, at the end of the day, it really, from a feasibility and operating standpoint, doesn't make a lot of sense and has not been very well implemented kind of in the, in this market. It really tends to gravitate then more towards student housing, which is not what we're trying to accommodate. And so that's when we looked at it and looked at what that cost would be and running there. So it really said, okay, well, to be meaningful, what we're trying to do, and what you guys, you know, what the council is trying to achieve for Morrisville, you know, we felt that sixty percent really hit that objective.
I also wondered, just one more question. I wondered if you had given any thought to any space that would serve the, the Morrisville entrepreneur, micro-business community, something like a frontier-type situation, you know, with rentable conference, conference rooms and that kind of thing? Just wondering if that was on the radar at all?
It is. So we actually have, I think it's included in one of the, it's about four thousand square feet of incubation space, which could be used from residents, could be used from local Morrisville residents or any surrounding area. So it would be kind of this incubator business where they could have pods, conference room, you know, conference area, printing services, computers and so forth that they would be able to use, you know, on a rental or a monthly kind of fee driver.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mayor Pretend Garamella, please.
And I agree, like, the sixty percent AMI, we don't have, this is the first one that we will be having if it gets approved. And my question is on this twenty-nine, because, yes, we are having conversations regarding a combo of a fixed route and on-demand. So that could be a combination. We have not yet made any additions, but the conversations have come up in the past based on the patterns and how we can, you know, be a better use to the community, because we see hindrance in the fixed, like, in on-demand where if it is more than one hour, you know, people are getting no access or those kind of things, you know? So, yes, we are adding more shuttles, it might help, but there could be very well a hybrid model of fixed. And this one, at that time, then you're pretty much hintering this thing by saying you will not allow or entertain fixed routes.
I think this condition just speaks to the practical design aspects of a fixed stop. We can't fit it this location? I think everyone agrees it's a good location for a stop. There is a fixed location proposed already in Park West Village, so this is the second stop. And, I mean, this condition is just speaking to, like, we, we looked at it, at the design of it, we can't fit it from a traffic standpoint.
So, so the reason I am saying is, we're not getting a big full-bone bus there. It might be the same bus, which is on a fixed route. We don't know the answer to that. If you're assuming that we are getting a TTA or go-trangle, like a huge bus coming as a fixed route, we have not been made plans for that. If that's what you're estimating, that it will not fit?
No, no, actually, it's my understanding that there are actually different requirements for a fixed stop versus a on-demand stop, so.
Okay.
For time stops, that type of thing.
I am not familiar with my.
They require like a pull-out. They require like a pullout for, for a fixed stop.
Okay.
So I believe on the fixed stop, they have, it has to be a separate turnoff lane and a certain amount of spacing, which is what is showing up. So just coming off the roundabout between kind of where White House Black Market is and Target on that road, there is a permanent fixed stop other location that's already been designated. This is in addition to that.
Where is that exact location?
So it's going to be coming off the, if you're coming from Morrisville from 54 into the shopping center and you go around the roundabout and you go past the road that takes you down to Main Street, but you go to the road that kind of takes you behind that building between Target. Oh, perfect. Between Target and kind of to the side of White House Black Market, right there, yep, where the arrow is shown. That is, it's basically center of the shopping center is where the fixed location is currently designated. The additional location which has come up for number 29 is over off of Bristol Creek, not far, you know, basically at that entrance right where the arrow is there. And that would be the second location, not in Lua, but adding an additional, you know, location that would be your point-to-point and on-demand.
Got it. And if you go back to the 29 and something came to my mind is, does the go-trangle, a carry-go triangle come, go-carry comes to that Park West?
The, so, okay, the smart shuttle is.
No, no, no. The reason I'm saying is, I was just thinking of a scenario where Park West could be a hub of, you know, go-carry, smart shuttle and all of them together so that there's an exchange of people from Cary to use point-to-point in Morrisville. And if they come there, from there, they can use the go-carry to anywhere but then Cary.
Yeah, so actually, we have had conversations with.
I think our planning director can help you with this one.
I can't remember, go triangle, I think. We had conversations with them and staff to talk about exactly that, a hub at this location. I mean, those are conversations that will, that will continue to happen. I don't know that there's concrete plans for that. We did talk about it. It'll be tough to fit in this location, but the, you know, I think for, at least in those discussions, the, the important piece was actually to fix the, the smart shuttle stop in the center of the, of the center for, for, you know, essentially for smart shuttle on-demand. And then we have the additional stops around Park West.
Now, the, I, I get your point. The only reason I'm asking is if you already have a designated shuttle, like a fixed route, and that's not a constraint for other ones to just come because it's just on the perimeter for both, it will just help both and actually pull more businesses to Park West.
So, so the hub design that you were talking about, I believe when we talked about that, that would require two-way, essentially two stops across, in both directions, I believe is what, and I think, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
If you can speak more to it, Director Siebel, but we, we did look at this.
I think there are definitely some moving parts with this. And from the staff perspective, we actually recommend the flexibility that the condition as written gives. So right now you have go-trangle and go-carry stops and a smart shuttle stop out on Cary Parkway. So you're looking at, and you have a go-carry and go-trangle stop next to Target. So you have two of those regional stops already, one internal to the center. And then for smart shuttle, you have a stop on Northwest Cary Parkway. You have a second stop that's incorporated into this plan on Market Center Drive. And then the third is what's being discussed as the condition offering a third smart shuttle stop. If we were to go to fixed route, and we don't know that answer, we probably, you know, that study is just beginning, being mindful of that circulation route. And we have multiple stops and locations in play, but every stop is going to add time and just the pathway and the route that the vehicle travels is going to be, need to be taken into consideration. So having a little bit of extra flexibility here from a staff perspective is actually a good thing as well because we're at least guaranteed to keep the one on Northwest Cary Parkway and a second internal to the site.
Yeah, and there's two on Chapel Hill Road at this time. So there's a lot of coverage in Park West Village for all buses and connections, and it's nice that we're part of the larger network there. But I guess you're not going to be surprised to hear me sort of bring up the fact that just to review, the theater is not doing well. You guys have to supplement it and are actually pouring money in instead of getting revenue from that space. And you want to make that better. So I guess the question would be, can you take down the theater and/or the adjoining buildings and just make it a one, one-floor retail like you have all over the rest of the shopping center without the apartments? Because that's just, the one thing that I'm having a problem with is the apartments. But if you can make it viable just by adding more stores there, you don't even have to get rid of Kill wins or anything else, bad daddies, why isn't that an option? Is it just really, that doesn't pencil out?
No, I mean, it's, if you look at what is occurring with the redevelopments of theaters and, you know, large box retail across the country, not, I mean, you can, you don't have to go farther than even the triangle and see what is happening with these type of town center developments and redevelopments of, you know, dilapidated space that is no longer valid. What you're seeing is the increase of residential because it is about density and amassing of bodies and just continuing that massing. So you're seeing that in South Point. You're seeing it at, you know, Fenton's a great example. You're just continuing to see it at North Hills. And so, you know, again, the viability of a long-term, you know, with the retail is to create that traffic, the built-in traffic with, with the residential. Because it is a built-in shopper, they have built-in visitors that will come and they will go, you know, walk downstairs, go to the event spaces, walk the streets, go to the retail. If you just do the retail on its own, you know, it doesn't really help create a long-term sustainability from just a retail.
So if the movie theater is just breaking even, you'd stay?
Well, the theater is not bringing in the traffic, which is why you see the vacancy that you see around it.
But the retail that replaced it would break even. So why don't you just replace it with retail?
Again, it's not, I mean, again, what, what the issue is, is the, the entertainment that the theater originally was, was bringing in, and we all know theaters have changed.
Right.
I mean, clearly you can go out there and see, I mean, you can look at our, you know, pictures from five or six years ago and pictures now of when the theater's operating versus not operating and, and the traffic. You know, what you see with, again, so yes, we can create the entertainment, we can, we can redo that, but part of it is creating the synergy of not just standalone retail. It is having the bodies that are there constantly to give activity. Because retail is not active all the time by itself. But if you have, you know, the office component, which is part of the 4,000 square feet of ancillary space, you know, and also looking at the residential and adding the additional residential, it creates that constant synergy throughout the day and on the weekends that we're currently not getting, which is hindering the retail that's existing. Adding more retail by itself is not going to help fix part of the issue of the retail viability at Park West.
Okay. Even these attractive entertainment things that you're talking about, trying to add?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember Johnson.
So I don't really have any questions. I just want to thank our staff for the last couple of sets of meetings that we had and obviously in Casto too, because you were, you came to those meetings. But our staff did a great job of reminding us where we started with this project well over a year ago when it went to the Planning and Zoning Board. And reminding us also of the changes that have been made over this past year and are make, the changes that are happening right now because of those meetings. So I, I really do want to thank our staff for holding those special meetings for us. They were, I think, beneficial, beneficial to me to remind me all that is a part of this rezoning. It is not just a mixed use, but there are, there are lots of other pieces that are a part of this rezoning to help with the redevelopment of this shopping center. So I appreciate that effort and I appreciate Casto being a part of those meetings too. So thank you.
And if I may add, so you're, part of what we're doing with this entertainment is the retail, the entertainment retail that we're looking at is, you know, for it to be viable long-term and to develop it so it can be successful. The residential, while that is a big component of just the synergy, part of it too is to do that alone, it is also subsidizing so we can keep the rent lower to attract those users. Without that, there's not a mechanism to be able to develop the type of building that they are going to need to operate successfully at a value that makes it make sense, if that makes sense. So the residential is really subsidizing a big, a big section of the entertainment part to make the whole thing viable. So, because you can't, I mean, if the retail, if retail, if, say if retail's typically $30 a foot, the entertainment is going to probably be somewhere half of that. And so you can't build these buildings that they would need to operate in this environment without some sort of mechanism to offset that expense. Just to add a little layer to what your question was.
Okay. Appreciate that. And as you know, you can't charge more than market, so you guys have to absorb that 80% and 60%. So that's appreciated as well because that's innovative for our town and our community. Does anyone else have any questions for staff or the applicants? Okay. Seeing none, January 14th is when we're scheduled to take action on this. Thank you all for this long but fruitful effort.
Thank you and happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
You can see future meetings, events and citizen involvement opportunities online. At this time, we're moving on to council comments. I'll first recognize Mayor Pretend Garamello, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
I don't have much other than saying like, you know, it was, it has been an excellent year, a lot of good work, and I just want to thank the staff and all the management who has put in a lot of hours. And it's time to take some downtime and spend time with your families and celebrate the festivity and happy year.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson, followed by myself.
So Brandon, early on in, in your comments, you talked about the, the great turnout we had here tonight for the Town Center Open House. And I agree with you. I, I thought the timing of the meeting would not produce that many folks that would show up. And I was pleasantly surprised when I walked in here too. And you did a fabulous job with the presentation, by the way. And several folks commented to me about that. So thank you for that. But when you were, when you made that comment earlier tonight, it, it made me reflect a little bit. And I've said this before, and maybe not in recent years, but in all the years I've been serving on council, one of the most productive and heavily attended public input sessions in this town revolved around the town center. And I'm talking years ago, when we met in the First Baptist Church and we had multiple meetings to talk about this town center. And so I, I shouldn't be surprised. That interest has not waned in all these years. There, there's a great desire and a need for a, a town green and a town focal point and a town center. So I guess in hindsight, I should not have been surprised at the number of folks that turned out here. So, so thank you for that. Thank you for having that meeting. I'm sure I've got to remember to do the survey. Hopefully, nobody's closed that online survey yet because I haven't gone out to do it.
No, we have not. And if I may, again, I think that's a great segue to asking, reminding folks, you know, if they weren't, didn't have a chance to be here tonight, we can get that PowerPoint onto the website so that they can at least see what the, the slides of the presentation are. And then again, you know, we'll certainly have future updates with council. Mark and I were talking a couple of weeks ago about, you know, when do we come back again as we put some more pieces together for you to look at?
Okay. Thank you for that. And then just the, the last thing I want to say is just happy holidays. Thank you all very much for what you do throughout the year. This is a really good time to step back, reflect and, and just acknowledge with gratitude all that is done in this town. We, we do, Rose said it beautifully, Morrisville is the best town, in the best county, in the best state, in the best nation. And I totally agree with her. And so that, that's a testament to all of you and the work that you do throughout the year. Council comes here and we, we set policy and direction and adopt the budget and, and, but you all are doing the work 24/7. And I know that, and I mean that when I say 24/7. So I thank you ver, what's that?
That's plus 1,200 hours.
Plus, yeah, plus the 1,200 hours you spend on, yeah, you need to reevaluate that 120 hours. I still don't believe that. But anyhow, but thank you all so much for all you do and I appreciate you all and I hope that you all get to spend time with family and friends and have some downtime over the next couple of weeks. And I was going to say, I'll see you in January 14th, but I think we have, we have a couple of meetings going before the end of the year. So thank you all.
So now it's my turn, followed by Councilmember Body. But yeah, like our chamber, we are small but mighty as a town and we punch above our weight, which is really great. But as we close out 2024, I'm filled with pride for all we've accomplished together. Our vision of connecting our diverse community to enhance quality of life through innovative programs and services, that's never been more evident. This year, we've seen significant progress on our town center, a future gathering place for all. We've all, we're also excited that yesterday, we broke ground for Morrisville's first ever dog park, offering our, offering our four-legged family members a place of their own. Meanwhile, the Southern Lot expansion will introduce sand volleyball courts, a multipurpose sports court, and additional basketball courts, spaces designed to bring our community together in play, fitness and wellness. None of this would be possible without the belief and support of our residents, nor without the incredible efforts of our world-class town staff, which has been mentioned already. Your dedication, expertise and heart power every milestone that we achieve, and I thank you for your service to our community. As we enter the holiday season, let's continue to celebrate the rich diversity that defines us. Here in Morrisville, we honor traditions from Christmas to Hanukkah, Kwanzaa to winter solstice and beyond, the spirit of welcoming and inclusion is what makes Morrisville more than a town and makes us all a family. With a shared commitment to innovation, progress and connection, I'm confident Morrisville will continue to be not only the best place to live in North Carolina, but the best place to raise a family in the entire country. Thank you for your trust, your support and love for this town. Happy holidays, Morrisville. And now it's time for Councilmember Body.
I also am very proud and grateful for the accomplishments of this year. I give all my thanks and appreciation to the town staff, as they well know because I say it all the time. And happy holidays, everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Just want to wish everyone a very restful and happy holiday season. Thank you all.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
I always said happy holidays in my invocation, but I do want to have a shout out to our town staff. We did tremendous work this year and it, it doesn't feel the same as it did a year ago. And that's because everybody worked together and listened and we have a new economic development director because of us listening to what our town needs. So I think 2025 is going to be a very bright year, but we need to continue to do the work to make the town shine. Happy holidays and happy new year.
Excellent. Town Manager Udoma, anything to share?
No, sir. Happy holidays.
Okay. Very nice. So at this time, we're going to take five minutes just to relocate down to the work session table. And that's, we're going to invite Strategic Performance Manager Aaron Hudson to help lead the discussion. So please come back at 8:55 and bring your blue cards and your mics. bring your blue cards and your mics.
to you if needed. So, but thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Appreciate time with you all this evening, so that we can continue our discussion for updating the Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan. So, tonight, we're going to be reviewing what we've identified as themes to use as we move forward in this process. So, quickly with you all, I want to set the stage of the work that we've done to get to this point and the approach that staff is proposing. So, I do reference the administrative report a few times in this discussion that you received from me in your October twenty-second Agenda Packet. It's linked within this presentation. It's also attached to this agenda item for your convenience, if you need to reflect back to that. So, what staff is requesting, or proposing, I should say, is to use a layered approach as we move forward in our review and revision process. And what that means is, we want to build on our most current information to review and revise our organizational plan and draft any updates. So, for us, that means our FY25 budget, that's our capital needs, operational needs, our resources, it's the organizational plan progress that you saw in that administrative report. So that's goal and objective information, really from 2019 to 2023. And then also, our strategic department plans, which are going to feature more budget and resource alignment, accreditation alignment where applicable, operational goals, program efficiencies, and an enhanced focus on data. We also have a proposed community outreach and engagement plan that is going to be covered with you all tonight, because of course, we have to gather community insight. We've got a variety of methods to cover there. So that's sort of the layers that, that we're proposing to consider. Tonight, what I really want to spend time going over with you all are what we've considered identified themes. So we'll start with the organizational themes, and those are going to be through a couple of different iterations. So we'll look at themes in our current plan. We'll also look at themes within recent department discussions and feedback. And then we'll look at themes within our FY25 budget and capital plan. I also have some time built in for council discussions, some feedback on those themes, and some prompting questions. As I mentioned, I do have a proposed community engagement outreach plan to cover with you. And then we'll wrap up just with reviewing some next steps and timeline and answer any remaining questions that you have. But I do have question times sort of built in, so if you'll hold questions until then, then we'll, we'll cover them as, as those times come up. All right. So I'm going to start with the identified themes within our current Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan. So what do I mean when I say theme? Really looking at what are the recurring or pervading ideas, subjects, underlying messages. So, within the current plan, what I sort of set out to do was looked for recurring words, phrases, anything that sort of rose to the surface, and then grouped those into subcategories. Generally, the themes remained organized within a goal that they were already assigned to. But the main focus was really to try to funnel into the key words. That's really what those themes were. So, just want to take a couple of minutes and look at some of the bolded themes that you see here. Within Goal One, mobility, transportation infrastructure, traffic management. Within Goal Two, housing options, current and future infrastructure planning, development and redevelopment, sustainability. Within Goal Three, community engagement, events and activities, DEI. So I'm not going to cover all of these, but I think you can probably sort of see what the impetus was here to sort of, like I said, funnel those down into, to more or less key words versus all of the narrative discussion behind each of these. All right. So next, I'm going to move into the identified themes within our current department feedback, some of the documents that departments have developed and shared. And then I'll also cover the themes that were identified within your FY25 budget, bless you, and CIP, bless you.
Bless you.
Okay. So, we have collected feedback through calendar year twenty-four. So that was really during our FY25 budget development, our FY25 budget approval, because again, this is with our departments, and then grouped those into categories similarly using like words and phrases. So across our twelve departments, a variety of viewpoints, a variety of experience collected. There was a pretty wide range of information, but also a lot of similarities. So reflected, what you really see here is the current operational needs, influences, as well as future and ongoing needs and visionary perspective that the departments have provided. So similarly, just going to take a few minutes to look at some of those identified themes and bolded terms, where you see something in bold. That's where more than one of the departments selected or provided that as a recurring theme. Development and redevelopment. Similarly, we noticed that on the prior slide within our current plan. Training and development, succession planning, increased workload and prioritization, legislative changes. Brandon alluded to that tonight within our administrative plan. We've had some discussion very recently today about Senate Bill three eighty-two, and how the things in that bill could affect us. Continued investment in and support of technology, that entire column really is reflective of different components of feedback that departments shared. So next, I'm going to move quickly into what we identified as themes within our FY25 budget and CIP. So we started with the layer of our current plan, layered in some information from our departments, and now we're layering back in our FY25 budget and CIP. So we have a lot of the same individuals providing information here. We can also make some inferences that the community has had some input, because we know that we make a, a pretty big push every year to involve our community in budget feedback. So there's at least some perspective given to what the, the community would think about our budget at that time. So, similarly, key words, phrases have been grouped into categories. You'll notice that some items overlap multiple themes, really due to the area of impact and occurrence. So we'll take just a few moments to review that here. What I think is really interesting, sorry, it's hard for me to see far away. I mean, my glasses up close. What I think is really interesting is, as I started to layer this information, I started not only seeing the same themes and subjects, I also started seeing that things were falling towards the same buckets or the same categories, which was sort of affirming, because that's what I was hoping would happen, but I didn't necessarily know until I started working through that. So you'll notice probably a lot of the, the things in, in this chart, because this is all part of your FY25 budget and CIP. A lot of information related to sustainability, a lot of information related to future investment and growing community needs, a lot around asset maintenance and technology, those really big components of keeping the good work of our organization moving forward. So, let's see now how these identified themes really align between our, our various documents and feedback opportunities. I've sort of alluded to it, but it's a little different when you see it on paper. So I would encourage council not to focus on what we know are the six goals within our current plan, but really rather to focus on what these identified themes are. These provide some preliminary insight on areas that may be further categorized, areas that may be less aligned, or any new areas that we might identify. I'm going to cover the next two slides, and then I'm going to share some prompting questions, so that we can have a little more robust discussion after. So here you see where it really started with our departments. Had sort of ten general themes emerging as continuing to align between our existing organizational plan document and our department feedback, and that's across the top in blue. Then we have about six new or emerging themes for consideration across the middle in green. And then a handful of themes that really have become operationalized and programmed as part of our regular-based budget across the bottom in gray. So, I, I sort of shared already that with all of our departments, variety of feedback, variety of expertise, so wide range of feedback, but then also a lot of similarities. So, a few that I really wanted to point out, because most, if not all, departments
So what staff is requesting or proposing, I should say, is to use a layered approach as we move forward in our review and revision process. And what that means is we want to build on our most current information to review and revise our organizational plan and draft any updates. So for us, that means our FY25 budget, that's our capital needs, operational needs, our resources, it's the organizational plan progress that you saw in that administrative report. So that's goal and objective information really from 2019 to 2023. And then also our strategic department plans, which are going to feature more budget and resource alignment, accreditation alignment where applicable, operational goals, program efficiencies, and an enhanced focus on data. We also have a proposed community outreach and engagement plan that is going to be covered with you all tonight because of course, we have to gather community insight. We've got a variety of methods to cover there. So that's sort of the layers that we're proposing to consider. Tonight, what I really want to spend time going over with you all are what we've considered identified themes. So we'll start with the organizational themes, and those are going to be through a couple of different iterations. So we'll look at themes in our current plan. We'll also look at themes within recent department discussions and feedback, and then we'll look at themes within our FY25 budget and capital plan. I also have some time built in for council discussions, some feedback on those themes, and some prompting questions. As I mentioned, I do have a proposed community engagement outreach plan to cover with you. And then we'll wrap up just with reviewing some next steps and timeline and answer any remaining questions that you have. But I do have question times sort of built in, so if you'll hold questions until then, then we'll cover them as those times come up. All right. So I'm going to start with the identified themes within our current Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan. So what do I mean when I say theme? Really looking at what are the recurring or pervading ideas, subjects, underlying messages. So within the current plan, what I sort of set out to do was looked for recurring words, phrases, anything that sort of rose to the surface, and then grouped those into subcategories. Generally, the themes remained organized within a goal that they were already assigned to, but the main focus was really to try to funnel into the key words. That's really what those themes were. So just want to take a couple of minutes and look at some of the bolded themes that you see here. Within Goal One, mobility, transportation infrastructure, traffic management. Within Goal Two, housing options, current and future infrastructure planning, development and redevelopment, sustainability. Within Goal Three, community engagement, events and activities, DEI. So I'm not going to cover all of these, but I think you can probably sort of see what the impetus was here to sort of, like I said, funnel those down into more or less key words versus all of the narrative discussion behind each of these. All right. So next, I'm going to move into the identified themes within our current department feedback, some of the documents that departments have developed and shared. And then I'll also cover the themes that were identified within your FY25 budget, bless you, and CIP, bless you. So we have collected feedback through calendar year '24, so that was really during our FY25 budget development, our FY25 budget approval, because again, this is with our departments, and then grouped those into categories similarly using like words and phrases. So across our 12 departments, a variety of viewpoints, a variety of experience collected. There was a pretty wide range of information, but also a lot of similarities. So reflected, what you really see here is the current operational needs, influences, as well as future and ongoing needs and visionary perspective that the departments have provided. So similarly, just going to take a few minutes to look at some of those identified themes and bolded terms where you see something in bold. That's where more than one of the departments selected or provided that as a recurring theme. Development and redevelopment. Similarly, we noticed that on the prior slide within our current plan. Training and development, succession planning, increased workload and prioritization. Legislative changes, Brandon alluded to that tonight within our administrative plan. We've had some discussion very recently today about Senate Bill 382 and how the things in that bill could affect us. Continued investment in and support of technology. That entire column really is reflective of different components of feedback that departments So next, I'm going to move quickly into what we identified as themes within our FY25 budget and CIP. So we started with the layer of our current plan, layered in some information from our departments, and now we're layering back in our FY25 budget and CIP. So we have a lot of the same individuals providing information here. We can also make some inferences that the community has had some input, because we know that we make a pretty big push every year to involve our community in budget feedback. So there's at least some perspective given to what the community would think about our budget at that time. So similarly, key words, phrases have been grouped into categories. You'll notice that some items overlap multiple themes, really due to the area of impact and occurrence. So we'll take just a few moments to review that here. What I think is really interesting, sorry, it's hard for me to see far away, I need my glasses up close. What I think is really interesting is as I started to layer this information, I started not only seeing the same themes and subjects, I also started seeing that things were falling towards the same buckets or the same categories, which was sort of affirming, because that's what I was hoping would happen, but I didn't necessarily know until I started working through that. So you'll notice probably a lot of the things in this chart, because this is all part of your FY25 budget and CIP. A lot of information related to sustainability, a lot of information related to future investment and growing community needs, a lot around asset maintenance and technology, those really big components of keeping the good work of our organization moving forward. So let's see now how these identified themes really align between our various documents and feedback opportunities. I've sort of alluded to it, but it's a little different when you see it on paper. So I would encourage council not to focus on what we know are the six goals within our current plan, but really rather to focus on what these identified themes are. These provide some preliminary insight on areas that may be further categorized, areas that may be less aligned, or any new areas that we might identify. I'm going to cover the next two slides, and then I'm going to share some prompting questions so that we can have a little more robust discussion after. So here you see where it really started with our departments. Had sort of 10 general themes emerging as continuing to align between our existing organizational plan document and our department feedback, and that's across the top in blue. Then we have about six new or emerging themes for consideration across the middle in green, and then a handful of themes that really have become operationalized and programmed as part of our regular base budget across the bottom in gray. So I sort of shared already that with all of our departments, variety of feedback, variety of expertise, so wide range of feedback, but then also a lot of similarities. So a few that I really wanted to point out, because most, if not all, departments included them in their feedback in some form or fashion were technology. So you see I wrote technology, technology, technology. Recruitment and retention, training, succession planning, so sort of bucketed those together. Compliance. Now, when we speak compliance, we aren't always talking about budgetary compliance. That's a component of it. But we have compliance needs by way of accreditation, which we know we have four accredited departments. Then we also have compliance in the budgetary component, so we've got budget and finance compliance. Then we also have legislation, and we have legislation that has affected a number of departments over the last year or two, and compliance needs that they have to amend the work that they're doing or follow suit with new legislation. Competing demands and priorities, and that's really broad. So the reason that that is included is because that could mean workload, wellness, training, programs and services. So trying to look at these themes and this feedback in a more visionary, in a more strategic way than granular, and really determining where we can lift this up in the future and allow the work of our departments and the work of our organization to tell that story a little bit. So as I said, really a wealth of information from our departments. I still have a lot more work to do with them, but really, really pleased with the start that we have here. So following suit, alignment between our current organizational plan and your FY25 budget and CIP. Eight general themes emerged here with sort of continued alignment across the top in blue, and three sort of new or emerging themes across the middle in green. As sort of a fun reminder, just reiterated across the bottom there for you, the 10 priority areas that town council identified for the 25 budget, excuse me, at your retreat this year. As I was continuing to review and assess the budget and CIP information, I was, it was a lot of back and forth and cross-checking and cross-referencing. And when I remembered this particular piece of information, again, very affirming, because I think it's very telling that not only is this information included in our FY25 budget and CIP, it's also reflected in the work and the feedback that our staff has provided. It also hearkens back to the plan that was set out several years ago. So the vision and the ideas that you have for the town have sort of been in place and are continuing to be carried forward. So for me, in this realm of work, this again is very affirming, so I hope it is for you all as well. Okay. So now that I have sort of rambled and shown you these identified themes, want to have some discussion with you all, and I'm happy to flip back to any slide that you would like, but want to have just some discussion about what of these themes did you expect to see and why or why not? Of any of the new or emerging themes, were you maybe surprised to see them? Why or why not? And is there anything that you didn't see that you would like for staff to include as we continue to move forward in this process? So happy to facilitate and start hearing from you all. Councilmember Robati.
Yes, please. I was happy to see that sustainability seemed to bubble up to the top. I think that we, you know, I think that that needs to be elevated to a pillar level in our strategic plan, that sustainability underpins everything.
So, excuse me, if I can just clarify, you would like to see sustainability as more of a goal versus a subcategory. Is that fair?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fender.
I agree with Councilmember Robati in that, you know, I didn't really understand what you're, on the, one of the previous slides, you had like down here, it's before, where it said some of these themes have just become operational. I, yeah.
There you go.
I, I don't want us to lose sight of sustainability as a goal, and the same with mobility and tr- all four of those down there. One of the things I guess I'm a little confused is the themes that came out from your staff about workload and succession planning. While I think those are important for your staff, how would we be working them into our strategic plan? Because that's more community facing. So, yeah, what do you think, what are your thoughts?
Sure. No, yeah, that's a great question if I can reply. So let me clarify if I can this component. Not that transportation, infrastructure, mobility, sustainability, traffic management aren't still recurring themes in staff's work, but these have become operationalized and programmed, so they are sort of, I don't want to misspeak, but they're almost ingrained in the work that they're doing currently and continuing to do. So they're programmed in, continuing to be programmed in. Does not mean that they are not important by any means, so please don't let my words misrepresent that. But also excellent question on the workload succession planning. So the way that I foresee that coming into an organizational plan is, because the organizational plan is really sort of the umbrella, it's the big arc that we all fall under. And then underneath that, of course, is the operations. But having a plan for those components, you know, succession planning is part of recruitment, retention, training, different things of that sort. So it may be some wordsmithing, it may not be called succession planning in an organizational level plan, but still a component of that for how to ensure that all staff have the ability to grow and develop in the organization. Does that help?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so. I think I'll understand more as we go along.
Okay. Good question, though, thank you. Yes.
Just say like, it sounds like the sustainability is kind of ingrained and across all the departments already. And I think that it's done well to sort of insinuate itself and be made as part of the decisions for purchasing and everything, so I think that's really good. It's kind of like, reminds me of a few years ago, that the hot topic was like health in all policies. People were talking about that, always looking at health and all your decision-making, so I think that we're already doing that with sustainability. So I think that it's important that it sort of has risen to almost a pillar, and I think of them as the six pillars, you call them the six goals. Is that correct? We're just talking about the same thing there. So I'd be looking for a theme, I see technology up there, but I like the idea of really digging into data-driven decision-making. And I think we're heading in that direction, that was mentioned a couple of times already about this, but that can lead to more transparency and more accountability, and I think that'll help us continue to grow as a professional organization, the more we can be forward-facing with all that, with dashboards and sharing department plans. Looks like we'll have a little bit more visibility into those as part of this process, which is great. I mean, I'd like everyone in each department to know what are the top three goals in that department, and everyone can just speak to them and know that that's what they're trying to do as part of a larger plan. So that's just kind of my general thoughts about what I've seen, because this is a lot. This is hard to take in all of this, and you've been living it. So kudos to you to organize all of it in such a way that it's very presentable to us and to the public, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, did you have another question? I'm sorry. Okay. I'm happy to jump back to questions, or like I said, I can flip back to any slide, just let me know.
Okay, so I'm going to make a confession. I can't log into my laptop. I have not been able to log into my laptop all night, and all my notes are in there, and I can't remember what I thought about anything I'm trying to remember. I think you're on the right track, Erin, I think, can you go back to the themes again? Go back.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, stop, yeah, stop there for one minute. When you, when you spoke on this slide, you talked about the fact that you want to pull out words and have it, so you're looking to do more bulleted than this wordiness that we see on this slide.
So this is really a first pass. None of this is finite or definite, just a first attempt at how we can pull out more of the high level versus so much of the narrative. We are going to have a couple more conversations about this, I've got more conversations to have with staff, and like I said, we have a robust outreach plan for the community. So this, again, very much first pass at sort of trying to start to funnel.
Yeah, but I think that's right. So, so I think, I think you're right, we need to be more high-level than down in the weeds sometimes on some of this. I mean, we get real specific on some of these, on some of these items, like under engaged, inclusive community, so 100% agree with that.
Okay.
I got to come back to you for the rest of my. You need glasses to see that? Do you want to borrow them on?
Do you want to print it out real quick? Just take a moment.
Councilmember Schrallen Johnson.
Not wearing my mic, sorry about that. I appreciate the level of information that's being shared tonight, because I think it validates a lot of our assumptions. The challenge for me, and I think there might be a couple other council members, is it's a very dense document, like I think of Microsoft Word versus PowerPoint, and to have those, you know, six areas in bigger font so that we can kind of see it and not have the detail and just kind of, you know, talk about it. Right now, I'm like focusing on a lot of detail squirrel kind of thing, but I don't want to dismiss the amount of intense work that's been here and the value that it brings. I just, it's just the way that I'm digesting might not be as effective with this format. So thank you.
Thank you.
Could you go to the next slide?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati.
So on the slide before this one, are these, just to get me up to speed, are these proposed, these are existing?
Yes.
Okay. So then, okay, then I'd like to go to the next slide. So I don't necessarily think that these, that these, as these top things as goals, they seem to me to be way more granular than we need at this level. So like, for example, recruitment and retention, I think comes under a broader goal of operational excellence, you know, and so do a bunch of things under continuity of services, to me also come under that same bucket. Like I think these things are fine at a department level, but I think that we can up-level them significantly to turn them into more of an organizational strategic plan. And also, I don't see transportation up here anymore, but if we're going to have, if we're still going to have a goal related to transportation, I think pedestrian safety has bubbled up to the point where it should be a subcategory under transportation, because I feel like we're doing a lot of road improvements and intersection improvements, and it is not getting any safer to be a pedestrian in this town. So that's just something I feel like we, like I don't think we don't care about it, but I do think that if we elevate it to be part of the organizational strategic plan, then that, you know, that means something. That means that at a top level, we're taking that as a goal, and I think that's really important at this point. But yeah, I think these, I mean, I'm sure these are department, some of these are definitely department goals for sure, but I don't, I don't think they're high-level enough.
Thank you for those thoughts. So these are not identified goals, as I said, they're, they're just themes. They are a recurrence of words or phrases that were then bucketed into categories. So these have not been identified as a goal for any one or multiple departments. These are just groupings of the words and comments and feedback that department shared, and then understanding how their feedback can layer into, and as you stated, sort of rise up to the level of support, sorry, rise up to the level of alignment and support of the work in an organizational plan. So to your comment, the pedestrian safety and transportation, I have some, I have a whole bunch of other things in, way in the weeds in all the other stuff I've done that really show the different plans and programs and processes, I'll just say, like, planning and engineering are working on, and those would feed into what is currently our goal number one, improve transportation mobility. I'm stepping away from looking at it that way right now to just really best understand what is occurring at our organization level, what is occurring at our department level, what's occurring with our resources, and then remapping all of that together, if that paints a better picture, and I don't think I've articulated that very well.
It paints a picture of the approach you're taking, certainly, but I guess then I don't, I guess then I don't really understand the, like, I just, are there things that are in this feedback, in these themes, that don't map to current goals? So that would suggest a need for a modification of the current goals, or the, you know, that a goal be deprioritized, or that, you know, something else is coming up as a main goal? Like, could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you. That's the, that's really sort of where we'll get to ultimately, because didn't want to arbitrarily make that determination until we got sort of all the feedback, until more conversations were had with council, until more discussion is had with staff and their plans were revised, until the public was engaged. You know, if I had just an arbitrary thought that any particular goal may or may not have the same weight or importance as have the same weight or importance as it did four years ago, that's just Erin's point of view. Or if our department staff felt any one particular goal didn't have the same weight, that's only our department's perspective. I really wanted it to get all of the variety and range of perspectives before bringing back any recommendation to council of this particular goal doesn't hold the same weight that it did, or these elements of this goal could be reworded, reorganized, rephrased. Maybe this one doesn't apply anymore. So that's to come. That's just, yeah, just not where we are at this point. But that is certainly a down-the-lane step we'll be taking. Yeah. I think, councilmember, or I apologize, Mayor Prota.
When you say these are department feedbacks, is it per department or are you bucketed under these themes?
I don't know that I'm understanding.
They come across departments?
Yeah. Yeah.
So I got individual feedback from all departments and then used their feedback to then, excuse me, put into categories.
But can I see, if possible, what each department is giving? The reason is, I'm trying to figure out what IT has given, because two-way communication website, you know, I don't see anything about smart city initiatives in here and those kind of things. So I just wanted to see where, if I'm missing anywhere. And we talked about AI-driven, like chatbots and those kind of things. I don't see anything in here either. Like, so, and especially from a planning point of view. I just wanted to see from theirs, before it was categorized, if we can see a rough how they have done it, so then you can put some context around it. Then, you know, saying, okay, this is coming from this, okay, kind of, I can understand it. Now, when they're all, you know, scrambled into all these locations, like, for example, two-way communication needs. So what does that mean? That is coming from the police or the fire? Or what is it really coming from, the needs coming from? I can see that there, but who is basically putting that request in?
So, again, if I can clarify, your desire is to understand who, which departments provided the feedback. And I also did not include every single thing, every department.
That's fine, that's fine.
Stated, because if it was, you know, advanced technology or anything, those things I did try to group together.
The idea is not to hold them, you know, to the gun on that, but just to see, like, the trend of how it is going. So at least we know, okay, yeah, this makes sense, okay. It can go into one of these categories. Now, I'm like doing a reverse engineering, like, looking at, okay, like, service and program level demands. Okay, what does that mean? Like, are we talking about parks and rags? Are we talking about public works? You know, so those kind of things, it becomes hard to, okay, from where it is coming. So for me, that would be a little easy if it is the other way around. Even if it is whatever the laundry list they have put, doesn't matter. You know, it's just for me, okay, this makes sense, this makes sense. And then it can just get filtered into any of these pillars.
Yep, I think I can, I think I can get that to all of council.
Because certain things I'm missing, like multilingual needs of language access, I get that. But the multilingual needs, that can all be catered in the website, because you can do multiple languages on the website itself. So are you talking about when the public record isn't given?
So you're looking, I apologize, I'm sorry I cut you off.
That's fine.
So you're looking for the context.
Yeah, yeah.
Whereas I was trying to provide the theme.
Like, I was sort of put, I'm looking at the context mostly to understand where, you know, how it is going to those pillars. That's the way I'm putting it to my friend.
If I could, Erin, so I want to ask, I think what Erin has done is tried to highlight things mentioned by multiple departments. So I think what I may be hearing is you'd like some clarification about certain items that are on this list as opposed to necessarily knowing where everything came from.
Yeah.
So maybe it would be more effective.
Even if there's an asterisk, like, you know, say, okay, service and program level, if you have some kind of a marker, like, okay, parks and rags, or, you know, planning or someone, like, at least I know, okay, that is something that's coming. So that it is all, then I can understand how it is bucketed. Otherwise, I'm trying to scratch and understand more and more. Like, using data analysis and data support addition making, is it coming from IT for what? You know, is it, how are you making, are you using for planning? Are you using for, you know, inspections? You know, that, you know, because data can be used for multiple ways. If there are, like, the same issues happening again, then you can stop it.
Mayor Prota, I think what you're asking for is like a rubric. So it's like, how do you, you know, how does, what's the scoring? What are the components? You know, as you're aggregating that information, we know that a lot of departments are overlapping, as they should, because these are strategic goals. But some departments are not going to have one or two of the goals as their primary. You can't have every goal, every one. So, you know, looking at specific examples, IT, you know, just understanding how that, you know, pushes and pulls might be of interest to, you know, us kind of giving pressure tests to, does that really, you know, work in this current environment? So, just a thought. Sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 I think that's, because like, if I look at outdated equipment and aging infrastructure, are we talking about body cams? Are we talking about vehicles? Are we talking about the other computers? And so like, so, yeah, and so like, from which departments is this coming? You know, like, I won't, you know, because we're just spending a million dollars on all this stuff. So is it fire department?
And you're sort of illustrating where this rose from? Because what you're indicating is sort of what I did, bless you. Which is why I asked if that's sort of the information you were requesting. And I think Councilmember Schragni-Schonson articulated that pretty well, too. Seeing all of that detail was very overwhelming, and that's how the theme idea arose. And that's where the outdated equipment, aging infrastructure theme arose versus replacement of body cams and in-car cams, replacement of fleet vehicles, replacement of computers, trying to replace mowers with EV mowers, things of that sort. So that detail is there, but the intention was to really, again, bring it higher level to leave that detail sort of down in the weeds.
Yes. I get that, but if it's coming to the budget time, I would at least know, okay, if the request is coming, okay, you know, I'm aware that this is some of the things that are, like, changing the lawn mowers to EV.
But we're not at budget time. We're talking about strategic planning, so we're not, the goal is to stay up here, not just down into the weeds.
But these are department and goals, so like, I don't know which department we're talking about.
It's emboldened because it was brought up by multiple departments. We don't need to know which department it came from right now.
I get it. No, no, I get it. So like, I'm not seeing any smart city initiatives which is happening. So why is it not coming as part of any of these themes? That's what I'm curious about.
Is it on any of the other slides? So maybe that's something that we're missing.
Under technology, smart programming.
There we go, there it is.
This is a better one, I like that one.
So this is what was covered in your approved FY25 budget and CIP. This is feedback through conversation with staff over this year and through their budget submittal and budget approval process. So you see it layered. This is not as, maybe as granular as the budget and CIP.
I think Ann has something. Her thing is, no, that was, yeah, yours has been up for a while, and then I have something. No, you've heard from me?
Yeah.
Here is really a third slide where we see a combination. We see the things that are common between the CIP budget things and the department things. And I think that I fundamentally disagree that we need to see the minutia of what the department said. Because for the purposes of strategic planning, it doesn't matter which department setting, and it doesn't even matter what the specific department level, like, if we start getting into the department level goals, that's just going to distract from the larger strategic plan. The strategic plan shouldn't, it shouldn't be at the granular level where it's just going to, where it's going to include things that are just the goal of one department. So I think if we take the CIP themes, or the budget CIP themes, and all the work done distilling out the department, the department feedback, put that together and figure out what top level, what the top, those top level things are, right? And then I would only put things under them that are common to all the departments or that each department can interpret in its own way. Danger and decision-making. That's it. You know, AI integration, fine. But, but once we start getting into stuff like department worn body cams, I mean, like, we are way in the weeds there. You know, so I think infrastructure, up-to-date infrastructure is, maybe it's a subplot, but it's not.
Oh, I'm sorry, God.
Yeah, so say all that again.
You're okay, you're okay.
I'm lucky I said it once. Am I really not loud enough to see extremely loud to anyone?
But I guess you can't hear it on the recording.
Okay, I just said combine these two slides. And I think the next slide, which isn't there yet, is the money slide that we can really talk about in terms of developing a strategic, developing a strategic plan if indeed we need to develop a strategic plan that's different from the strategic plan we already have.
Councilmember Fender.
Yes, so I agree with everything Councilmember Rabadi said, with one adjustment. And I think this may be partly why, well, it's partly why I'm getting kind of confused, is we need the community feedback. We need, I think that's maybe why some of us are struggling with this, these slides, is there's a piece missing. And to me, it would make more sense to have those common themes from the community and then compare that to what, like, the side, the slide with the CIP budget and the stuff that came out of our retreat last year, and then combine that with the department themes that you came up with. I do, one thing I do want to say, though, I really do, I pulled it back up, our strategic plan, the goals that we, that's existing, and everything appears to still be applicable. So, I mean, I like what we have now, but to Ann's point, once we see all that data from the community and the departments, that will help us determine if we should adjust, which is what you've said, right?
Thank you.
That's all.
Your call.
So if you can go to the CIP 20, FY25 slide.
Or back.
I don't know if it's forward or back. So, I mean, essentially, I'm kind of more focused on outcomes. It's like, what do we want that slide to read for FY26? I think of that as a short-term reason that we're doing this strategic plan, like, what's not on there that we want to have on there when we look back at this in a year? So that's kind of how I think about it, because I think our current plan is pretty comprehensive, and it's just what little tweaks need to happen. And it's good that we're going to be hearing from the departments. This is our first opportunity to say what we think is missing, and then we're going to ask the community as well. And you're going to be talking about that in just a minute as part of the next part of the presentation. So I think it's helpful that the departments and we get a first crack at it. Not that we can steer their thoughts, but it'll help ask better questions and sort of differentiate between where we're good, where it's kind of embedded and part of the groundwater already, that we're already doing these things, and where we need to add some thoughtful language into our strategic plan so that we can focus resources and give essentially the direction to the departments that we want to see more of this across the town. And then they can do their budget asks up to their department heads, which go through leadership team and then eventually come to us. So I think this is, for me, kind of the money slide. Like, what's there, what should continue, and what should be deprioritized, what should be added? So that's kind of how I'm looking at attacking this, because I'm more granular. And I think that will feed the larger strategic plan. So like I said, just more data-driven decision-making, sustainability across everything we do, or transparency. And it's hard getting two-way communication, but if we can keep giving one-way communication to them, giving the, our residents and businesses the opportunity to access things through a dashboard or things like that. We're kind of still in our infancy for that. And I think it would be really helpful if we were able to put more and more out there for people. We had talked about parks and rec departments and knowing how many people are in our facilities, on our greenways, on our tennis courts, not just who's on it now and can I get to it, but how much are they being used, what times of day? Having that kind of data available will help us to know whether or not we need more tennis courts, for example. So that's getting a bit granular, but that's because, that's just kind of how I think. I love the list of everything and prioritize it, but that's not really this process right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Schragni-Schonson.
Liz, did you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm out of sorts, because I didn't get in my laptop. I've been out of sorts a lot of meetings.
They're not here, so. Because I am, you know, project manager by day, town council by night, process. We're at 9:49, we've been going for almost an hour. I want to make sure that you get what you need without this being a three-hour session. So how can we help you? A lot of this has been about processing content, but what else do you need from us in order to take that next step? Because I know this is early, so.
No, good question. So you've really done what I need you to do with these few slides. What I wanted to sort of wrap up with you all was reviewing what we've sort of established as our proposed community outreach program. I've had some really great communication or great conversation with our communications and outreach staff about the best ways to engage our community. We know that an internal staff review and identification of themes is not enough. I think we have determined that again here tonight, especially knowing that our organizational plan was originally designed and developed as a community plan. And we would never have had a strategic plan in April of 2018 had it not been for the tremendous input and support of our community. So at its base, we quickly identified the recognition and So at its base, we quickly identified that recognition and inclusion of our diverse community is going to be critical. So we are taking a multilingual approach, translating both our current documents and our future documents into Hindi, Spanish, Chinese, and Vietnamese. So we are translating our current plan. We are also translating our four core values poster. So that will be available to be shared, posted, distributed, accessed. We are also going to do a few tweaks to our strategic plan webpage because no need for us to direct people to information if they can get to it and then aren't able to review it or access it, because it's not in a language that they are able to, to read or communicate in. Making sure that information is more high-level, some of that narrative needs to be pared down just a little bit, and creating more opportunities, again, as we've discussed here tonight, to point to data-related information. We do have a platform for a community dashboard that will be updated. We also have some other data-related resources that are available on our website. So we want to make sure we're engaging those appropriately. Building on those elements, we're going to continue to use all of our key tools, like social media, e-newsletters, flyers, digital displays, et cetera, to convey that information. And the bonus is, we're going to incentivize our survey and other outreach mechanisms with a gift basket. So I did a, a massive call to all of our departments today to make the best ever Morrisville swag basket, so more to come on that. So just a quick update about our timeline, the red components, our steps we've completed, green is where we are here tonight, blue are the steps that we have remaining. What we're looking at is hopefully being able to launch our community outreach plan. It's looking at probably the last week of December, first week of January, due to the translated materials that we're waiting on, and then we'll need to proofread those and ensure that they are correct. And then that puts our, our next opportunity to get some information reviewed and brought back to you all probably sometime Q1, Q2 of next year. So any additional questions that I can answer for you all here tonight? And thank you, you have given me a, a lot of good feedback. Yes, Mayor Colley.
So at the open house earlier, I saw a lot of people with the postcards. They brought them with them, so I think that was a very effective way to bring people out. So it's always nice to try to see people where they are, and we are not going to have a lot of opportunities to table at things, other than like Western Wake Farmers Market in the timeframe we're talking about, the holidays. So I don't know if we need to kind of extend our survey time to give more opportunities to do more than just digital outreach and maybe a mailer. So I know we're trying to move this along, but that's not going to be a time when people are really interested in doing a town survey, perhaps. So getting people, and food is always great, too. You can always get people to do things if there's going to be food. So if we had provided food tonight, we probably would have doubled the people in the room. So those are just some thoughts that now is really the downtime and not probably the best time to try to get the survey input. And I'm not sure how to make that better. Yeah, that's abbreviated, 9:30 to 12:00, it's still good. So I think that's a great idea that we should definitely be doing that, but I don't know, that's a really small microcosm of what's going on. And I don't know how much through traffic we're going to get there when it's cold or a bad weather day, which is more likely. So that's just a thought about trying to make sure that we get as much input as possible.
Certainly, we'll, we'll take that back as, as I continue to work with your comms team. Yes.
Can you go back to that slide, Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, so you want, just trying to figure out, because I, I kind of agree, this is a really bad time to survey people. And I know you put, you know, continues through January, but I hope that means the end of January, because people are not even going to be back in tune early in January. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out where we want to end. And you want second quarter of next year.
So originally, we were, we were looking at launching our outreach next week, but because we are waiting on our translated materials, as I mentioned, it would be the end of December, early January. So what we discussed with our, our comms team is doing some, what we call breadcrumb social media things, maybe using a play on the, the new year, new perspective, new ideas theme, lots of good ideas, working with that team. Anu Mishra, our language access person, has been super helpful in the translated materials and getting some of that information coordinated. And then very likely, a hard launch with survey and outreach after the first of the year. Also, because the town center survey has not closed yet, comms sort of oversees all our surveys. We typically don't run more than one at a time, and then there has to be sort of a lag period in between. And we don't want to survey fatigue our community, so we would had to have waited in between those either way. So we sort of have a forced push to wait anyway.
Okay, well, that, that's kind of good. The other thing, you know, we already have our advisory committees who are full of engaged residents. I, I think we need to come to, you know, when we talk about this, you need to meet people where they are. We need to be out engaging our advisory committee folks. I think we need, and not just for this, but for everything we do. I think we need to get them clued in on what's going on. And so I would tell you, you need to go out to those meetings as well.
Councilmember Abadi.
Do we have any ability to, to text people the link to the survey in their native languages?
I do not know the answer to that.
I am quite a bit more likely to take a survey that's texted to me than I am a survey that I receive literally any other way.
So we do have QR code capabilities. Most of our information is accessible on mobile or desktop, but I don't know the answer to that, I'll certainly ask. Any other questions I can answer tonight?
Could we, could we get like some kind of report card on our current strategic plan? There's those objectives and the goals in there, like, it'd be nice to be able to point to something that says this is where we've been successful.
Your October 22nd administrative report.
Right, okay. So maybe socialize that a little bit more, too, about how the strategic plan in 2018 helped create these great outcomes. We're looking to do it again. What do you want your future to look like?
Thank you all. I appreciate it. I know that hour is, is getting late, but I appreciate your continued engagement and your feedback. Thank you.
You bring out a lot of good things about us. This felt like a retreat discussion to a certain extent, which is nice, sort of gets us in that mood.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
So, yes, we have two closed sessions at this time to discuss a matter of economic development and a contract matter, as we have no plans for any public business to be conducted after these closed sessions. On behalf of the whole town council and our staff, I'd like to thank everyone for attending this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again in 2025. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@morrisvillnc.gov or visit www.morrisvillnc.gov/council for additional contact information. Happy holidays to all. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to enter into closed session. Councilmember Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, just one edit on the closed sessions. I think it's more appropriate to say the same citation for both A and B. So it would be 318.11A4 for both.
Oh, so there's only one motion, just 11A4.
We're discussing two matters.
Get that, okay.
With the same, under the same statute, yes.
Okay, so, all right, let me, let me try this, and if it doesn't work, Frank, tell me. Okay, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A4, I make a motion to go into closed session, discuss matters of economic development and contracts, and to discuss a contract.
That's fine.
Thank you.
A motion from Councilmember Johnson and Council, a second from Councilmember Fender to go into closed session. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 6-0, is 10-0-1. We are in closed session. Thank you all.